Okay, it being six o'clock, I'll call for the July 28th meeting of the planning board here at Wickham Hall. And I'll begin with the roll call. Scott Self here. And Michael York.
Yeah.
Jane Johnson.
Here.
Michael Day.
Here.
Brandon Self.
Here.
Richard Lane.
Here.
Selectmen's rep Bill Hupwelker. Steve Malone alternate. And Lily Gallagher alternate. And we have a full board, so I won't be seating anyone for any. The agenda, we have applications in public hearings, the planning board number 22015, site plan review application. It's a continued public hearing from July 14th meeting. Novus Group on behalf of West Swansea Road Solar Garden LLC requests a site plan review to construct a 3.5 megawatt ground mounted solar array at 909 West Swansea Road. Subject property is located at tax map 71 lot 13 dash two and is located in the business and rural ag business. And a B, planning board number 2216. Public hearing subdivision application, Brickstone Land Use Consultants LLC has submitted a three lot subdivision application on behalf of 234 Old Winton said Highway Realty LLC for property located on Sapper Drive and shown at tax map 19 lot 97 dash six and the subject property is located in the industrial park district. Number C is planning board number 22 dash 017 and that's a site plan review application public hearing required. Jonathan Holden has submitted a site plan review application to make improvements to the Lane Field property owned by the town of Swansea. Located at 120 South Road and showing at tax map 24 lots two, two dash one and four. The subject property is located in the residence district. The subject property is located in industrial park. Nope, that's not supposed to be there. Get rid of that area. Discussions in how the business, SMC Swansea LP, site plan modification. Discussing tenure transportation plan, feedback on that. And discussing protections in our site plan review regulations and possibly discussing site plan review regulations in general and any other business that may be required. So that brings us up to is regional impact, is anyone?
On move, there is nothing on nice agenda to require a certification of all the towns.
Okay, motion by Michael York that nothing on the agenda tonight requires notified surrounding town. Is our second? Second by Richard Lane, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, can I say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, got that out of the way. Now to review and improve or not improve the minutes of July 14th, 2022. Does anyone have any comments on the minutes from last meeting? And if not, then a motion to accept them as presented would be in order.
Motion to accept them as presented?
Motion by Michael Day to accept the minutes as presented. There are seconds?
Oh, second.
Second by Brandon Self, is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that's out of the way. Now this is our first item. First up is continued hearing. And again, that's the planning board number 22015. And that's a site plan review application from July 14th. Novus Group on behalf of West Swansea Solar Garden LLC requests a site plan review to construct a 3.5 megawatt ground mounted solar array at 909 West Swansea Road. The subject property is located at tax map 71 lot 13 dash two and is located in the business and rural ag districts. So the application was accepted as complete at our last meeting. And now we're in public hearing and now you can make your presentation.
Thank you, thanks to Chair, thank you for having us, my name is Andrew Keller from New Hampshire Solar Garden and I also have Nick here from Novus who will be here to answer any technical questions, we also have Cassandra back here as well, who's also a part of the hearings team to make sure that if there's anything on the technical side of things, we can make sure those are addressed tonight. And obviously recognize a new face, a couple of new faces, if there's not, if you be the pleasure of you being Mr. Chair, I'd be happy to give a quick back, very quick background because everybody else had heard about it. And the meeting minutes seem to have a lot of depth to the background of this project, which may be valuable to you.
It would be, if you don't mind.
Not at all, other board members don't mind giving you a few minutes to give a quick update, I'd have to do it and then we'll get right into it, Sarah's done a wonderful job kind of breaking down the things that we've done since our last meeting. Nick will be here to take you through some of the technical things. But I think we've taken on a great advice and information, kind of done our best to break back to the board for your review. But by way of some background for yourself and anybody else new to the board from our last time, so again, this is what we call a community solar project. And where we are in this process, we had reached out to your community, to your town early on to understand if there was some interest in this project with many different community benefits. One of the biggest community benefits that has now come to fruition since we started the conversation with town was the the Community Power Committee that had been set up in your town. Your town has gone through the process of voting to set up this program where the whole town can gather and buy their power as one big fine and share that savings amongst everybody from some of the residents on Main Street to the schools, the town businesses. Whenever we do our projects in our communities, we always want to do our best to make sure our state of the community, the value, the savings of the powers. We don't always have the luxury in this process for that to occur because by the time we start constructing on our project, we just leave that that's one of the important parts to our projects. And then once people see it built, they're like, oh, can I sign up? Unfortunately, it's a little too late. The fortunate thing for us on this project is that your town has taken the initiative under new law that was passed about two years ago to come together and be able to basically get renewable energy, local renewable energy at a discount compared to what we're especially now seeing for very high electric rates. So we are waiting for the state to finalize those, what I'll call the rulemaking process, the UFC or Carbon Energy is in charge of making sure that the procedure to take it from legislation to actually how the town's deploy these programs are finalized, that's taking place, I think there was the final meeting just over the day about, I had many updates personally about what the outcome of that was, but moving in the right direction. This project now is in the full engineering phase, we went a hundred years on the board. So we got their, you know, their sign off on the project. We have gone in front of your board segment to request a payment through a tax for the taxing structure for this project that has been approved at this point. Novus has done a great job facilitating all the survey work and I think can handle any questions if there's any technical related to like what we've done with the state, where we are with AOT. But we are, you know, here with a full site plan. And we have also, we're hoping to complete our ever source engineering, which was supposed to be wrapping up right around now. It usually takes about 60 or so business days for them to finish that up. We have spent the money, we've done the work with them, awaiting for them to back us and tell us what the upgrades are, any required upgrades to lines to the substation and what we're required to do at the site itself. So we are nearing the end of the process, I would say our last kind of leg of this tool is going to be the AOT group process, which again Nick and Cassandra have been working on to make sure that we're complying with their regulations to make sure that those bad processes. So kind of give you a quick overview, again, we're fortunate enough to have a town that's excited about this opportunity because they can get their power from this project, there'll be a portion of the degree power could come from this project if they choose to go that route before we look down their to use and benefit. So that's kind of where we are now. I'll pass over to Nick just to give a couple of quick updates on things that we've done since we were last here. You have a good packet, there were some kind of general sort of questions that I provided by handout in your package. Way to decommissioning, what the fencing looks like, the knock box, some of the things that were feedback, I would see both the sour and the fire department as well. So those are there if you have your follow up questions.
Thank you.
All right.
So this right here, we have the aerial photograph, that's the very much like the aerial, so you kind of get a better idea of what the surroundings are. But so I'm going to go through this overview of site plans. So obviously a brief background of the site, the site was cleared back around 2000 time. It was permitted as a sand gravel pit, which briefly operated for a while, in fact, in 2012. Since then, the site has been vacant. Re-vegetated over time. Site is primarily all second growth right now. Some small saplings, underbrush and other lower ground cover on the site. The only areas was really the road is mostly around this eastern side right here, primarily in the DOT right away. So what we're proposing for the site, it's going to be roughly three and a half megawatt solar array and the overall array is probably 7.6 acres and it'll be about 15 acres overall of disturbance. And most of that is going to be that second growth that I just mentioned. Really the only spot they're going to be disturbing much of the mature growth, it wants to be this little area over here where the northern access road will enter. And so there's currently an existing access road down here on this portion of the site. That area will be maintained only for utility access, so that'll be expanded to an 18 foot wide road. And it'll just dead end right here, we have about four utility poles over here, which could vary based on the utility company. Lots of electricity is going to come in from a pole across the street here to those utility poles. And then from there it'll drop down to underground conduit, which will enter the array. So that'll only be for utility access, main access to the site will be up here on this northern entrance. And this entrance will come in here, wrap around the back of this hillside and then meet up with the backside of the array up here. And due to the steeper grades on the site, kind of in order to avoid significant cuts over there, I believe the town regulations called for maximum 5% slope for roadways, so that's one of the things that we had asked for before. The way that we have this grade in here is actually a 10% slope. And then from there it kind of follows down alongside of this array. And one of the things that we had changed as we're going through the AOT application process, we had these more provisions in the site. And primarily all this to do with the drainage. So we had changed, or we had a swell running down the southern side of this access road, which came over into this infiltration basin right here. And so one of the things that we had changed was we kind of shifted this road down a little bit and then added in a second swell on the northern side. So right now, I can go to the gray. So the way that we have these revisions since last time here, basically the storm water that falls and the slope on this northern side of the road is going to come down, be captured by this swell, which will come down and then convey it to over on the roof into this infiltration basin. And then anything from this side will come down to the swell, go down outside, the road as well, pitch towards this swell, come down into the infiltration basin. And another revision that we've made, so before, we didn't have this seven four bay here. So going through the AOT application, we kind of resized the infiltration basin a little bit, kind of made it a little bit larger and then added in the four bay in here. So this infiltration basin here basically will deal with all the storm water from mostly just this access road portion of the site. And the way that we have that set up, we can handle infiltrating 100 year storm. So storm water from the northern part of the site will be handled by this infiltration up here, infiltration basin up here. And then basically everything else from the array and pathway down the side of it will also be handled by this lower filtration basin. And the way that we have it set up, it's all graded down to the south. But also this area up here also has a cross slope to the east. And this area has a little cross slope to the west. So the swell that we have coming down the perimeter here will take up everything from this area and it kind of cuts across and goes down to the base here. So this is another one of the revisions we've made, we added in this seven four bay on this area. And then it's just infiltration, infiltration basin down here is also sized to adequately handle all the storm water. The way that we have a size, it can easily infiltrate the 100 year storm and actually the 100 year storm still has slightly over footed report or even reaches the top of the basin. And we do have the not wire fence that'll be around the perimeter of property or perimeter of the array down on the southern end, we're here, we're putting some privacy screening in for the letters. And one of the things we also try to do is on this end down here, we like to try to keep as much of the vegetation that's existing. Already, so we have a little vegetative buffer here and also the screening on that fence as well, hopefully block that as well as we can. And then, so we also have added in fire department requested another gate down below, just so all access to the sites, we added that in, the knock box down there. So I think that kind of covers the majority of some of the changes we have made since last time and gives you a brief update of what's going on on the site. Yeah, so basically as I mentioned before, we added in the changes up here to that, that's still, we shifted this over. And then, so that's one of the things we've done, it went from like a 22, 22 foot wide road down to an 18 foot wide. So we've kind of reduced that a little bit, but we still feel that gives you plenty of room for two vehicles to pass each other going up and down. It really is all we expect for traffic coming up here is very periodic and probably one, two vehicles, isn't it?
It's typically about two to three cycles a year is what's before and that's going to be like a non CDL rated type of vehicle, you know, contractor's van or vehicle or truck that might go up to do the kind of inspections, everything, again, first of the new board members, I think we talked about before, all of the array is actually monitored remotely, so if anything were to be damaged by weather or curious kids, you know, we would be noticed of that, like the burners or the panels not working. So that would be an unscheduled type of an event. But a scheduled event might be two or three times a year, there'll be vegetation management plan, which does not include any chemical, it's a mechanical process. So that will be a prolonged procedure that would occur up there. And then again, you know, going every electrician going up there and making sure that we properly do some visual inspections of wiring, other equipment that's there just to make sure no curiosity, it only gets you there to your way at things or other things that come up one place, there is ongoing monitoring, but there is schedule, which I also included in your packet, to kind of feel for some of the things that might include it in that, you know, this business.
Yes, the 18 foot wide road up here should be sufficient for all that access and also.
Our concern with the road would be firefighting apparatus, not necessarily your vehicles going up there to maintain the project there. Say there was a brush fire or something up there, you know, that would be the town's concern about that road.
Yeah, yeah, I think so, that would, I think should be a fun for them to ask to be able to go up and forth down there. We did do turning radius checks on this, we ran it through the WB 67 truck, which would be very large. Like flatbed truck and that one you can make it up here. And so you have this wider area up here and then from there it kind of steps down to a 15 foot wide access coming down.
So to the right of the swell, you know, the swell that runs down on, I guess it's the east side of the solar array, that swell there, that's captures the water from there and brings it transversely over and down into this pond down here. So anything to the right of the swell, is that going to be disturbed? Or what's going on with?
Pretty much, you can, I have a tree line showed on here, pretty much everything at the edge of that swell over is almost remaining assets.
And that drainage there goes, you know, it's pretty steep right there, I can see on the drawings here, so that drainage there goes this way.
Yeah, so that drainage will continue to do as it does now, I think it mostly comes down towards the road and then there's the existing swell along the edge of the road as well, there's a catch basin up here, it's also a catch basin. Bring it over this way, there might be one in the middle as well. So it's imma by those catch basins and I think that's as well. And then from what we're doing capturing, the area up above it is going to reduce the storm work from what's existing.
Yeah, take it over and bring it up raw.
In the last presentation, or previous, you showed the access road coming all the way down to the transfers of your drain. It's not showing.
Yeah, probably, I think it's hard to see, but it does come down along, it's just inside the fence here, comes down along the outside of the array. And then right down here, there's a little hammerhead for vehicles to turn around.
You can't see it on that, you can see it on this one right here. Yeah.
Probably see a little bit better.
Yeah. Words. It goes like that, it looks like it goes like that.
There is a request for, by the way, from Novus. It was a request to bring the road down further, that's not an issue, you can certainly accommodate that. You know, for firefighting ATV.
Can you quite get where you, what you said there? Would you repeat that?
Sure. My name is Cassandra first from Novus and the request that we saw on writing was from the fire department saying they would like the road go further down. And, you know, for access to the ATV and other equipment, we would be certain they can accommodate that.
The upper road we were just talking about, and their request. Their request was further down than you have it on the drawings and.
Yeah, it sounded like they wanted to bring it all the way down alongside the road, which would be a lot down there.
Yeah, we can, we can make that accommodation. And this is a, an aside, a couple of the sides, you might expect, there's no flood lane on the property, no wetlands, and we did not receive any hits from NHB for rare or endangered species.
And we do also, I felt through Mr. Pudman's here as well, the current property owner provides a lot of history about the property, so if there are any specific questions about the the history, he is. Oh, no.
It wasn't quite clear to me, I don't want to interrupt you here, it wasn't quite clear to me to the plants, is that going to be terraced up there where the solar panels are or how is that, or is it just going to slow?
The way that it's graded so this, the grading kind of varies going down here because of the way that the existing site is, there's kind of hillside right here, the top of it, peak of the hills, right about here, and it slopes down fairly steep to the sides and down. So whether we have it graded is, it comes down in a consistent slope at a 2% down to about here or so. And then from there it goes down to 2% to a 5%. And there's a short section in the middle here where it's at 13% and then from there it's pretty much at, there's a little transitionary here, then pretty much at 5% to less down to the bottom.
Again, it's just a gradual slope that goes along.
It's really smoothing out the site, you know, taking out some of it, but there are a couple of peaks for smoothing those down.
And your vegetation control is going to be what, be able to cut that in between those?
Yes.
They said it was going to be mechanical?
Yeah, so the, the, the interro spacing, it's kind of hard to get a gauge, it's usually about 15 feet between the panels.
Oh, it's.
And then the panels are about three feet off the ground, the low end and about 10 or 12 on the upper end. So there would be mowing between and then we can, you know, be required to type work around the bases, so you don't have any growth coming up to the panels causing issues.
Andrew, would you just repeat those numbers again, 15 feet between panels?
Between the panels, yeah.
And how much above the ground?
Okay, sorry, 12 feet, sorry, we brought it, because of this level, we could, we could type up a little, so 12 feet, 3 feet at the base and about 10 to 12 feet at the top.
And, and what if there were to be a grass fire or something up there, it's going to be short vegetation underneath it, dry summer like we have now, a grass fire. How are those protected, these solar panels, what is it like under the?
So the grass will grow throughout and under it all.
I mean, if, if the grass caught fires, I'm talking about, and, and the flames came up to the bottom of those solar panels, what kind of damage would that cause? Um, if any, I'm just seeing out of the plane out.
Yeah, I mean, I, it would cause damage.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, like any fire, depending on the size of the height of it. Yes, that, that would definitely be something to, it was a small brush fire, we got the feedback we got from the fire department, so they could get some of their smaller from out there to manage that. You know, the intent of these projects, it's to, from a fire perspective, is if there was a small situation like that, you'd try to keep that grass cut two to three times a year, so it's not getting up tall and getting dry, creating more potential liability. It's back to that purpose of the two to three year mechanical, you know, visits for cutting things down. If there was something that occurred inside, then we would look to the fire to help put that out and protect everybody outside of it. Or if it started in the woods over here, we would hope that they were, you were to try to protect our project, just if it was a commercial building or a home or something. So yes, it would be, the system would shut off if there was any type of impact to the panels and the equipment, the system would shut off instantly. There are the appropriate equipment at the poles that we're discussing, I think, right there. That a lot would allow for no back cheating power out on the lines, so if there was a power outage, these things would still produce power, the, you know, that resource work is our technical.
And shut then anyway, so they will automatically shut down if there's a power outage, say not for a fire or something, actually they're not on the tenant or something like that. They, they interrupt between the solar panels and the main feed out on the lines there, but the solar panels themselves would still be producing, is that correct?
They would, they would not, they'll spend the power, it would be contained within the system and they wouldn't have anywhere for it to go.
My question was, you know, just if if there was a fire or something out there, I know, I don't think anybody from the fire department is here, but just are there special ways to fight a fire out there, just because if the sun is shining and you're fighting a fire out there, you're still producing power on those panels, aren't you?
Yeah, but, but unless you were to actually go, I guess you're sort of like somebody getting electrocuted or something.
Yeah, or, yeah, any danger to, to people or equipment, it's just because you can, you can shut the power lines out, you can interrupt the power lines, they're done. But these probably can't unless it's at night.
Well.
I'll let you think about that for a minute.
Yeah.
Because our code enforcement officer had a question back here.
You're right. What's monitored? I'm on it. Are you monitoring? I'll just call my partner. Okay, so, so there's not actually humanized, kind of humanized. No, not this time, if it became an issue where they were saying it was going to take place, yeah, they I have C projects and password against your state's from rocks at panels, it's just once they create panels. And then we had to address that, but typically of everything, if there was a road there or a burn or a damage, we get alerts. I'm interested to discuss, answer discussion. Yeah. My experience with some of the fire discussions that I've had, we have a project where the property office is on the fire department on and other branches of the town nearby here. The intent of managing a fire situation on a solar array is to, unfortunately, if they had to, is if it started inside the fence line, most fire departments are not equipped to fight fires that have, are at an electrical facility, just like if a substation caught on fire down the street. They would maintain the perimeter and either let it burn itself out or it damages it, unfortunately. So it's kind of the way that he compared it to me is if you have a commercial building and there's a fire inside the commercial building, if there is things inside the building, firefighters are probably going to fight it, they don't have to research, their job is to preserve the perimeter. And that really would be much different here.
So that's basically what the procedure would, what the procedure would be, would be that they just don't go in and supply.
Yeah, and typically what we do is partly we check the fire department, there's, there's usually a typical like sidewalk with the fire department wants to build, there's some procedural things that we would always do, once the construction team is done and it's commissioned, part of the commission process, obviously open that resource, make sure it's working properly, there's no safety concerns. And then we typically would then have the fire department come out, make sure they're comfortable with it, make sure they're sure everything is. And just, you know, that, that's pretty, pretty normal for once projects are completed. We've seen it in conditions in our approvals before where it's just a request that there is a, you know, a meeting with the fire department staff after the project is built. So there is some understanding. And there have been situations where some fire departments have looked for some, some guidance documents, which we could use as well.
Okay, just, I'll get to you in a second, one final question, that's part of it. What voltage are you putting out of those, you know, you're, you're putting out DC and then you're changing it to AC and then you're putting it into the higher voltage? Okay, just, I'll get to you in a second, one final question, part of it, what voltage are you putting out of those, you know, you're, you're putting out DC and then you're changing it to AC and then you're putting it into the higher voltage line, fifty-five hundred line or, or the?
That line coming down the street, it steps down from the transformers, I believe it goes from thirty-four, maybe down to thirteen or, or down.
On Route Ten you're talking about there, or you mean what you're putting into or what you're putting?
No, the lights coming down.
So might the existing lines.
Yeah, it's, it's, the substation, I believe, is a thirty-four KV and then it steps down, I think, a couple of different points, I forget the exact, our end voltage at the street. But our job, part of the engineering, whichever source is to evaluate what the voltages come out of the system. And then what we have to do to either upgrade the lines, get that, you know, either move that chance, those full load of transformers down, or, you know, if can this actual line support the voltage on the system. That's, that's a bit above my pay on electric engineer, but that's what we have our electric engineer work with every source to make sure that when they sign off on it, there's no impacts upstream or downstream to neighbors or others.
Right, so you'd be stepping in up on your property, I guess there were, it's showing, let's see, it's on some place on here, maybe not in this particular drawing, but the transformer and inverter right over there. So you'd be stepping up right there and it'd be the, whatever the, whatever the, thirteen thousand or thirty-five thousand.
Yeah, I don't believe it's, I don't think, this size system would not need the thirty-four. Size, again, if it was there, great, you'd just, you're like, you know, don't go in the water and ocean kind of thing, but again, that's part of the, we do a pre-application with every source, then our electrical engineer designs it to account for the right transformer type and, and then then we look to. What type of protections at the site as well as, as we get out on the street and even potentially back to the substation as well.
So it's probably not the higher voltage until it leaves that transformer right there. So you're, you're a regular and obviously free phase. Regular voltage, whatever that is, what is the voltage, or you don't, what's the voltage that the, the panels are actually putting out before they put into the step up transformer, do you know?
I don't.
No.
I'm not sure that.
I was curious, Steve, you had a question, I don't want to get.
Is there any, any special firefighting apparatus or, I don't want to talk about your foam tanks or something like that, that?
No, again, our experience with the, the fire departments is that most, even some larger towns are not, they're not set up to fight, fight electrical fires. And again, their job, not to be repetitive, but their job is to preserve fire coming in or fire going out outside of the fence line, so that's kind of where, where it's always landed, we have had some, again, part of we commented here, the fire department's request is to have more access with their equipment that they do have currently, if they, you know, they could get out there, if it's an emergency situation, we get a small, you know, ATV type vehicle from the main road down into, let's say somebody was, you know, mowing the lawn and tripped a bell and hurt himself or something like that, there was a reason for an ambulance or that fire to get out there, they could. But the, the most we've ever been seen in any of the parties I've done over the last decade is just to make sure the fire department had like an ATV type of a vehicle that could get out to a more rural area, being a little bit more of a rural community, that it was just a request was made to have it, so I'm going to make the assumption that they have that type.
There wouldn't be any equipment to fight the fire from outside the fence line?
No, just what they would normally have, just like any other, you know. In some cases, yes, but, you know, hopefully if it was outside the fence line, you know, they would have the resources to fight a, a, you know, a fire that started in the woods. It was like a lightning strike or something like that, and just as if it was any other, what an area next to somebody's home or business.
Question from our code.
So I, 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 I mean, do these plans with Fire Inspector Maxson and Fire Department's good with, with what we've got here. Much as what, what the senators are saying is, you know, it's going to be kind of surrounding, drowning, like problems, there's no, we're not worried about human life necessarily. You know, unfortunately, if somebody gets in there and changes it, but that's not the way they're doing it, they want to give extended access to make sure they have complete access, and really it's to the benefit of the owner of the panels, because the quicker we get there to put something on, the more stuff they don't have to replace. And of course, the fact we could have the neighbors, the neighbors to the west, it's a lot of forest there, and that's really what we don't, we don't want to see it, see it jump to, but I think the fire department's comfortable with the, the apparatus they currently have.
Okay, thank you, Mike, should have told us that before. Okay, see, I have any more, um, any other questions from the board while we're on this particular topic here on the solar panels themselves?
What do you do with them when they go bad?
Good question, it's also in your back, and I can share a little information for you, but to give you that.
Well, it's just a very big description, you just said that they get taken away, like what, what do they do with them?
Yeah, no, there is actually an article there as well, it has a little more detail, but it's hard to read, it's, you do that, what, what's going on, so the industry itself, in I'd say the last three or four years, because, because this industry is within its twenty or thirty year lifespan, and these panels can last up to forty years. We're not at the end of life because projects started thirty-eight years ago and are coming to an end in two years, what we've seen is more of the weather related damage. So for example, like Hurricane Maria or Rico, for example, devastated the island, there were quite a few large scale solar, much, much, much larger than this that were on the island, and it created an issue, there were panels that were damaged, what do you do with them? That's an example of one, and what's happened is a lot of, some of the recycling entities in the world, in the country, have started to add this into their mix of how to recycle, so they're basically, what, what is happening is happening in Puerto Rico, as we do projects down there as well, first hand experience. They, they compiled all the, the panels, it was the end of life situation, again, forty years from now, I'm sure the technology will be even better, but I'll speak to what is today, so they would dismantle the, the panels off of the racking, which is a mechanical labor process, they would be put back on pallets. And then they would be taken off site to a facility that has like EPA oversight, because then the panels would be taken apart, because there's aluminum on them for framing, there could be some glass that might be recycled, there's some stuff inside that could be recycled, and they're going to bring it down to the smallest amount of I think it's word stuff, the, the smallest component of the panel, just like electronic waste with our phones and computers and stuff, it'll be a part that has to be done. So that's how it's done now, that's how it's being done now. Unfortunately, what I saw in Puerto Rico was, it wasn't a lot of this decommissioning oversight on projects, so we were kind of smartening up, you know, here, and making sure that within our lease language with the landowner, with the town, there is decommissioning plan that gets signed off by an engineering firm. There's a cost associated with that that we know is the cost that we had to replace it to take it apart today. And there's, there'll be some form of surety, we have a sample, example of a contract in your handout that we would have on file with the town, we suggest that every five years it get reviewed, because the cost, the value of the decommissioning is not include any of the scrap value. So if, if ten years from now, the value of that aluminum is much greater than it is today or much less, and that, you know, has some impact on the cost of moving or labor costs go up, as they are. There's a mechanism to make sure that the town, if none of us were here forty years from now to deal with it, there's a financial mechanism to take, take the equipment away.
They don't actually recycle the panels themselves, they're not able to like reuse them over again?
What would happen with a project, like these type of projects, is you would more than likely, so the typical agreements of these projects are twenty years, so the agreement we would have with your town, assuming the town want to move forward with this community power initiative, would be for twenty years. That's kind of just the lifespan of these projects in the eyes of like signing long term energy contracts. But as I said, panels can last longer, they have a twenty-five year warranty on them today for performance. Within our leases, we have usually, it's five year extension options, so there would be no reason to just like take everything away out of your, that, you know, day one, year twenty-one hundred. So, because they, they still would be producing power per the warranty. As long as it's a place to sell the power, which you have a town mechanism, you also have a wholesale mechanism, just selling the power in a greater degree. There's no reason, it's like taking down an apartment building, just because it's twenty years old, you want to build a new one, that'd be a really strong reason why to take it down and build it, and I think in our point, the equipment's paid for, it's working properly, so there'd be no real reason to take it apart.
And I have another question, how do you tell when one of those panels is bad?
Yeah.
You know, how do you know if, if one out of the six thousand?
Right.
Those bad or there's sensors on them or something like that, that indicates that they're not putting out anything or?
To a degree, yes, so what happens is, we don't do individual, like homeowners and small businesses do individual panel monitor, you have technology to check each panel. This, a system like this is set up in clusters of panels, and then it comes back to one inverter, okay? And that inverter is speaking to those panels and vice versa, so if for some reason there was a drop in the amount of power going through the inverter, we would be alerted to that, okay?
Okay.
So then you can go out and what they do is they'll do, they'll do like line tests on the voltage, see if there's a, a drop, or they'll maybe I'll check the panels, see if, you know, you're looking over a hundred panels versus six thousand.
Right, yeah, could give you an area to start in.
You got it, and we do go back, and that's why we do those, what they call string level inverters, because if one inverter goes down, the whole system doesn't go down. And in the past, when I started this business, we'd have one inverter for this whole system, which is great, until once one inverter goes down, then the whole system's down.
Yeah.
And I unfortunately experienced that, it's, it's not a great thing, if it takes ten or days or two weeks to get a new inverter up there, whereas this, these smaller inverters, like two people who go out, kind of hot swap out the old one, put in the new one, and you're down, you know, one sixtieth of the project versus a hundred percent of the project. So that's, that's kind of back to that one, so, or, I think, the code enforcement officers had best, we are self motivated to make sure the system is safe, the system is not creating any issues for it to be down, because if it's down, you know, we're not delivering power here to the town, and that has material impact with the launchers as well.
So like if one of them goes down, you get like a notification or something like that indicating that?
You got it, so I, like on my phone, I, I own one of my projects over now in this town, on their fire department, for example, if something goes down, my phone gets an alert. Then I look at what it is, and if it's like, an inverter's not working, or, you know, which tells me that something's going on down, down line with the panels, we send out our electricians, we check it out, those are those like unscheduled events that might occur, but going back to the two to three, you know, a year type of thing, within that, maybe that's only once a year. Check, the electrician go out and just double check, make sure nothing's getting close to, you know, rubbing, finding your, a squirrel getting into something and you want to.
All right, thank you. How's the inverter know that it isn't, the voltage drop isn't due to just a cloudy day, are they tied to each, each panel on there, you know, if it's a cloudy day, you have a voltage drop.
Yes, you are, yes, it does, and, and it's. We really, I want to put this, when I first got in the business and the first product I owned myself, I was very, I would look at my inverter report every day. And wondering if it was what it was doing, and then it's, it's moved to more like, okay, what's, once a month now that I have years behind the ownership, how is it performing on a monthly basis? So cloud cover and a low, low day of production doesn't raise it to the point where it's not.
Calibrate it out there. You gotta calibrate it for that.
Exactly.
Would you just briefly explain what an inverter is?
Okay, so very simply.
Just simply, yeah.
It's the conversion of the solar power that comes into the panels and the conversion of the electricity from DC to AC that then goes out onto telephone lines. I like to call it the language that the utility uses to speak to the lines, we're converting the sun power to the inverter, to make sure that it's, the energy's going out onto the line that can then feed over.
Chops it up.
To the point of the monitoring, I, I was, I was involved in a project where this is back in the battle days, where if, if any part of the, of the panel got blocked and the panel was ruined, but we, we also had, we still had it on phones the rest of the stuff, and we had, we had a panel, but honestly, we went up, but what happened was, directly showed up that day. And they put up a new dish, which then cast a shadow, which then killed that pin, so. So yeah, so I mean, they, they do have it between, you know, the, the, because even if it's a cloudy day, it still moves and it still picks up the differences in, in, in the light, even in a cloudy day versus that, that, that's established, right, shuts it down, yeah, good point.
And how tall was the fence at, at the trailer park, and I guess the fence is the same height all the way around? Eight feet tall, okay, and that was solid with PVC in it or?
Yes, it's not wire fence, but then on the southern end, there's like a privacy screen that would get attached to it.
Which cannot see through.
We, we opted for that type of fencing for just because of the rural nature of where we are, and try to make sure it's more than off, that is a type of wildlife friendly type of fencing, typically usually raised up about six inches or so off the ground, so little guys can keep moving around, but the big guys are less likely to jump over it, they couldn't necessarily. But we also have to be natural, which is have to be the seven foot height minimum for a system of this size.
And is that, is the fence like solid or is it like opaque, you can sort of see?
Yeah, you can see it, there's, there is a picture, it's a little bit grayed out, but there are some examples of it with the wildlife, so it is, it is a wire.
Oh, just wired, you can see through it then.
Yes.
I did, I saw a picture of it up in here, I thought it was, I thought at the end of it was, it was locked off, but yeah.
I think to a next point, you know, putting some of that.
Yeah, it's some kind of like the. It's like a fabric, yeah, it's like, just gets attached to the outside of the fence for privacy screen, so that's what we have done, put it down on the center, put it down here.
And that's what, like green or brown? That's what I was wanting. See, while we're on drainage and that type of stuff, any other questions or voltage and that type of thing? More to present on this, or are you?
The other question.
The board members satisfied with all your questions, I don't know, is the public, public have any questions on what we're saying? Would you identify yourself?
You just said, you answered some of the questions that we had, that, what are you going to plant underneath for a seed mix, or you're just kind of a less current grass?
No, no, definitely, yeah.
I said not weed, just kidding. For the permanent mix, it is a combination of creeping red fescue, tuckey bluegrass, perennial my grass, red top and dino clover.
Yeah, right, I mean, the fescues are great because they love their low grow, lower growing, obviously the clover is also good for natural nutrients in soils as well, so I think that could be a good way, but ideally, we, we don't want the super tall rise that are going to grow, you know, like a winter rise that can grow that tall, obviously. So yeah, I think the intent there is a conservation type mix that will allow us to maintain it two to three times a year, so it's not overly challenging for the, you know, the lawn mowing folks to go out there, you know, they don't want to show up when it's this tall.
Any other questions from the public? Yes.
Before you post here, I'd like to make note that I was, as, as proposed conditions to the board, I was asking that, I think you guys consider that the maintenance of all that grass and vegetation, vegetation has been done mechanically?
Yes.
Any other comments from the public or the board, questions? If not, I'll close the public hearing, and when I do, it's no comments from the public or the applicant, we will deliberate. All set? Okay, then I will close the public hearing. All right, they are, first of all, I don't know if you did it at the last meeting, but they were asking for a couple of waivers, whether you voted on those waivers or not.
No, we didn't.
You did, okay, let's, let's get that out of the way, they're, they're looking for a couple of waivers here, one of them is section eight B four of the site plan review regulations for off-street parking and loading requirements, it's about the grading they're talking about for the road there. It specifies a maximum grade of five percent for access parking and loading, and their access order is going to be more than five percent going up the backside there, and always up top there, some places, I think you said it's going to be ten percent. But again, it's, it's not for deliveries and it's not for anything other than maintenance, yeah.
Final five is cool with it, so.
So, that one, I don't see a problem with, I don't know if anybody else has a problem, and there's also another waiver we're looking at, and that one is from section eight E two I of the site plan regulations, and that has to do with regulations for landscaping and screening, and they, they're putting in no more additional landscape planning's are proposed as part of the solar project. That, again, is, it's not a shopping mall, it's not a business at all as far as public coming in or anything like that, so unless anyone else sees a problem, I don't see a problem with that. Then if that's the case, let's see who else. No, didn't, so then a motion would be in order to grant them those two waivers from our site plan review regulations.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Michael, you're also granting. Okay, motion by Michael. You're also granting the two waivers. Second by Brandon South. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, hit by saying aye or aye. I oppose. Okay.
I'm seconded. This is the second of the motion.
It was seconded by Brandon.
Thank you.
So that is done. That's the waivers. And the fire department had requested a knock box. They listed that in their revised drawings there. And just, and they had mentioned that they had met with other fire departments upon completion. And I think that that would be a good idea if, if we just have to condition that way. It's an administrative condition that they just need the fire department just go over the thing. What not to touch, seeing what you're there, whatever, that type of stuff to do. So with that as a condition, anybody else have anything that we missed on about this project? It seems like a decent project. It's a big one. It's a good use of that property. There's probably nothing else. Sorry.
Just the conditions for the bonding and commission to. I'm sure I can't hear you, Sarah. The bonding. A bonding. Decommissioning. Okay.
Okay, yeah, bonding and decommissioning. We had said that, but the one about the airport too didn't. Okay.
What about to extend the roadway to go along?
Doesn't show it here. I think they had said it. No, they said they could do that. So let's put that, yeah, let's put that down as a condition.
I didn't take that condition, sorry.
The condition was that the fire department wanted that roadway on the backside, which would be, I guess, the westerly side of it, to be extended further down to the end of where the solar area is, just so that they would have access back there.
All the way down to the end of the property?
Down to the end, or, you know, whatever the fire department says is far enough. You know, we won't hold them to it, but you know, whatever they say there.
Got it.
Yeah, yeah, it would. They can get back there easily too. And.
Through where they find laws.
I think you put that in there. Probably not without, that's, that's going to be between engineers anyway, as, as far as their connection and that goes. Yeah, whatever, ever source has to do, they're going to have to do it, otherwise they can't look up to it. And shows, you know, just on, on the plans there, you know, they give an approximate location of solar panel areas on there. And so it's probably about the only place they're going to go right in there. But if it says approximate and they move it, and we don't like where they put it, then we agreed to approximate location and have nothing to do with it. I think we should hold them to maybe like, I don't know, 20 feet of where it shows that they are on the plan here. That would get them rolling. I would imagine they are going to move them around anyway. But just to give some kind of a direction on there that they be within 20, 20 feet, I would say, of where they're showing the drawing. I don't know if anybody else has it. On that. And I know they don't have any input, but if the board would like, I can just ask, ask the applicants.
Yeah.
Yeah, what, what they think about that. And you heard what we're discussing.
Absolutely. Typically, the reason we use the term approximate is because we like to stay within, like the fence line is the permitted area. So we will, everything will stay within the fence line. And that will naturally keep it. There's the reason why, an example of where it could change. When we get to the end of the permitting process, we'll go through the full construction. The, we have solar engineers that do some optimization of the site. And what they might look at, I mean, we described this 12 feet of spacing between the panels. They might say, we need to be at 13 feet of spacing, otherwise the panels might shave themselves. So it's less likely that we'll move east to west because the site is so narrow and long. But that's just education to the board. That's why it's approximate. But the point is, our envelope that you see there is what we have. We are hoping held to. And the approximate nature is not that it would move panels outside of the footprint that you're approving. That makes sense. And the only other example I could give you is if somewhere along the way, there isn't one, but if there was some spacing here, like for some reason, the way the design, initial design was it left a little space here, we would be able to move the panels over closer here, but we still have to, per, per code, we have to make sure we're 50 feet away from the fence. So it's somewhat self-regulating itself. And again, if this site was a different shape, I would, we were at a meeting last night, if we, that same thing came up, we said, this area, we might need to move the panels over a little bit, so we're further away from the weapons of the setup. So it's helpful guidance, but I, I don't foresee a lot of movement here, even in the example I gave you about the panels, space and change here.
Thank you. That's good input. Thanks. Oh, yeah. Down at this, this base one here, actually, yeah. They, again, they probably can't as far as they're keeping distance. And, and yeah, their, their fence would limit where they can put it, unless they change the location of the fence. If the fence is put way down there, but they're kind of limited with the terrain of the property too, especially right there. They can't go defensive more. Too much right there. Steve, what were you going to say?
You suggested 20 feet. I don't know if, but I seem to think that 20 feet is adequate. But if they have to move it more than that, we should come back and talk to the board.
And if the board doesn't mind, I'm going to ask the applicant again. You heard the, the statement that, you know, we, we talked about the 20 foot one, and if you have to move a panel more than 20 feet out of its range, do you see that happening here? Because if that was the case, then you'd be in front of the board.
Very, very unlikely chance that we would. So I don't see.
You could live with the 20 foot.
I definitely did. And maybe if, if it's okay with the board, maybe it's administrative review. And if it's something that, that, you know, code enforcement or the planner sees it's something more material, then it pulls us back in front of the board.
Yeah, and, and again, you, you can approach the board, just being on the agenda without having a public hearing or something, or something like that as well.
Yeah, so yeah, I, I, whatever the, your discretion, I don't see a issue.
All right. Do you think it's really necessary since they, they have to stay within that fence line anyway?
They do, but it gives us a little protection as well. Just in case, you know, and they, they don't foresee going out of that at all. So it's probably going to be a moot point.
Yeah, protection for what?
The board or the town protection from, if they wanted to move, say, 50 feet over, we could take them to court, but we probably wouldn't have a leg to stand on really, because it says approximate on the plans. And that goes for like a, that goes for signposts or, not necessarily all this project here, but goes for all of our projects that we review. If it says approximate and you agree to it, then it's an approximate.
And that's a big term.
It is, yeah.
Let's just keep control.
I appreciate your, what your concerns are. But again, I, I don't foresee as a big stumbling issue. If there was something really material, we'd probably come back on this thing as well. But I appreciate it. His comments.
Thank you. So are we going with that?
Yes.
As long as it's within 20 feet, I'm like, we're not checking.
Yeah.
And if it goes outside, it's 20 feet, then we have to think about.
Would you just repeat that for the record?
Let's clarify.
Looking away from here, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah. He said that, you know, we're talking about a 20 foot window of opportunities, so to speak, where those panels are. Because the panels say, or it says approximate location of panels. So we're saying as long as they put it within 20 feet of it shown on the drawing, then they don't need to come back.
From the fence?
Uh, no, no, from where it's shown on the drawing there. They have to be 15 feet from the fence. But as long as it's 20 feet from approximate the location they show it on the drawing.
Oh, I see. Okay.
So if it's out of that range, then they need to come back. Say they, who knows what, ran into something, they wanted to extend this one 50 feet down here.
Got it. Okay.
So that one would be, we have, conditions would be bonding and decommissioning. The, that the solar panels will have to remain within 20 feet of the location shown on the drawings. And that they meet with the fire department on, on completion and just go over. Yes, and continue the route. Yeah. So we have bonding and decommissioning, that's administrative, no compliance hearing. I can see within 20 feet of location, the location is on there, and that's no compliance hearing for that at all. Gave them a waiver on the slope, knock box they put in there. Even the fire department, that's administrative. So the only other thing they'd have to do is they'd have to show on the drawing the continuation of that road down to the end of the solar panels. And that is, it falls under compliance hearing. We can continue this hearing to let on the drawings, or we can have them come in one more time showing that on the drawings. What we're discussing is, okay, so if we continue the public hearing, they don't get their approval until that comes through. We can prove it with the conditions and have them come in one more time showing the extension of that road down there on the solar panels, which will be.
I think we have to do that before holding up.
They probably want their.
But they already agreed to extending that road down there.
Oh, yeah, right. They agreed to it, they just didn't show it. And I'm going to ask him another question now of hearing there. Is that on your other drawings? Have you shown that on another drawing that we don't have? The road extending down?
Not yet.
Okay.
So we, we.
So.
Clear, it's not, it's not a big deal to put it on.
No, and that's all we're asking for is just to put it on the plan before we sign the plans as plan. That's what we're asking for, so.
That can be a condition.
That can be a condition, yeah. But somebody, somebody will have to come back with the plans and the board will have to sign off, say, okay, yeah, that will be fine.
Well, that's not the appeal period at that point, or would it be, that's what I'm trying to.
The appeal period will be started once we approve it.
That's what I'm trying to mitigate is that, yes, it's the longer it goes for us to get our, all our approvals, it pushes out our ability to get the project into construction, which then dictates our ability to deliver power to the town. A little bit sensitive to.
I might ask a question also. Does that, does the planning board sign off on the final drawings before we can actually get our building permit? So you see everything that you've conditioned here.
Yeah, we do. Our code version guy is right there, but yes, the plan will have to sign off on it before that, that permit is issued.
So we're committing to it. We will, we will show it. It will be on the drawings before we can even play shuttle. Then the fire department will have the as-built plan of the, of the road and plus the block, you know, the cycle off to, to.
Yeah, that's the fire department that needs the as-built drawings at all. It's, it's just a, it's a planning board thing. The fire department requested it. And I know we can close the public hearing, but just let me explain it. Fire department requested it. And as a condition, it needs to be on the plan. And the planning board can't fully approve it. They can, they can approve it, but not sign off on it until that plan is presented to the planning board that that, that road is there.
We refer to the drawings.
Yes.
And there are pages of drawings. We need to reference as shown on, just because it's a funny C one or D two.
We do not, because, you know, they can put on whichever drawing that they want. And if the planning board doesn't like it, then, then it doesn't get approved, but it'll be on the drawing.
Yeah, I don't care. Just thinking, the record says the drawings.
Yeah.
So it'll be the applicable drawings. It's, it's kind of.
The road. The drawings, you have to stamp by an engineer, otherwise code enforcement will not.
But I mean, design need to be stated also, once they put that on there.
If it's, if it's on the drawing, it will be under, whoever the engineer, it'll be under his stamp. Otherwise, it, it won't be on there. It'll be his team or whoever it is putting it on it. It'll be under their stamp. So it will be their official stamp.
If you're saying that we just sketch that in, it's on the stamp.
Oh, you're.
Yes, the stamp.
You're suggesting that we, that we sketch it in?
No, I'm not saying, I'm saying they, they say they go outside.
Yeah, but the actual architect himself or whoever, I did notice.
That's what I'm asking.
He wouldn't have that master copy in his.
He has to stamp it as the final judgment.
He does, yeah.
That's what I'm asking.
But if it's presented to us as an official drawing with that on there, that they're held to that anyway. You know, it's, it's supposed to be stamped and it would be stamped, but even if it wasn't, they're held to whatever's on it. And where it is on the phone.
Because we've got a problem with that before.
Not snapped, properly snapped.
But it was just.
Okay, so what are we going to do? And have them come in for a compliance hearing? Approve it? Keep it going? If so, then a motion is in order to approve it with those conditions on there. If not, we continue the public hearing till the drawing, Brian, with that road.
I make the motion that we approve it with those conditions. I'll second.
Okay, a motion was made by Brandon South to approve the site plan with the following conditions. And correct me if I'm wrong, bonding and decommissioning, bonding for the decommissioning. And that the solar panels be within 20 feet of the location shown on the drawings. And that they meet with the fire department upon completion, just to go over any safety issues. And that they come back for a compliance hearing to show the continuation of the access road in the back of the, of the array all the way down to, I guess, the southerly end. Those are the conditions.
Questions? Extension for the road. Do we need a compliance hearing? Okay, we submit it to the building department for that, please.
No, if it's a, if it's a condition by the planning board, then the planning board has to approve it. So that's true. So we have a motion with the conditions. Is there any further discussion? Then all those in favor indicate by saying aye. All opposed? Okay, so there you have it. So you're approved with the conditions, but the final approval isn't until the compliance hearing. But you can continue on, you know, get your things going, your ducks in the row, as I guess the saying goes.
All right.
Do you know, do you know, just back to the appeal, does the appeal start if they approve tonight or is it the appeal, the condition? Do you know?
I believe it starts with the, I believe it starts tonight.
Yeah.
Because we approve with conditions.
That's right.
It's just that it's not final until we sign it.
Yeah, we, we, I totally get it. I appreciate the force, the support of that, because that keeps us to the two before without that 30 day pause. So I appreciate that. We'll fix that.
And just bring it in for our next meeting.
Yeah. All right. Thank you all. Very much appreciated. Thanks very much.
Okay. That brings us to our next item, which is a subdivision application that is planning board number 22 dash zero one six. And that is Brickstone Land Use Consultants has submitted a three lot subdivision application on behalf of 234 Old Homestead Highway Realty, LLC for property located on Sanford Drive and shown at tax map 19 lot 97 dash six. The subject property is located in the industrial park district. Upon a finding that application meets sufficient standards, the board will vote to accept the application as complete. And a public hearing may follow immediately or will be scheduled for a time and date certain. So let's see if we have a complete application. Let's see if we have a complete application. At the front of us and. All right, thank you. You can run down through, uh, the application and just the completeness of it and go, go down.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Jim Pickard, and here on behalf of 234 Old Homestead Highway Realty LLC. And the owners of the property, the proposing subdivision. This is a nice, easy, single-page application. Makes it much easier to go through the checklists. So, the close subdivision name obviously is on the plan. Name and address of the owner is on the plan as well. Scale is one inch plus 100 feet because of the size of the property. So it's not one inch plus 30. Lot arrow, it's on the plan sheet. Location, the right-hand corner. Name, license number, surveyor, it's up in survey. Number eight seven seven is his license number. The meets and bounds, the distances are all described, and each of the depots, new property lines. Perimeter, the stride as well. Asking for waiver from the location and profile operations of water mains, sewers, culverts, et cetera. Because it's just a subdivision, we're not building a road, we're not extending the roads. We're not constructing anything, anything changing. Close eastwards, right of ways, buildings, watercocks, ponds, et cetera, they are shown on the plan. Vocations of property lines obviously are shown on the program since it's a subdivision. Tax map number. It's 1997 six, it's the original lot. And the proposing, that's map number six, subdivision is approved. Also shown. Artography is shown, two foot confluence. Asking for waiver from items 13 and 14. Location of groundwater and test results. We're not building anything on all of the properties. The soil mapping, that information was submitted separately. And that's the state of sheets and minimum application. We're not leaving restrictions proposed, so we're asking for waiver. For that, I want waiver from existing buildings and other manning structures. There are none on the property. This is my proposed streets are shown, side of the drive. As it was completed, it's in a showman agreement. Asking for waiver for file work file profiles and cross-sections since we're not constructing roadways. We're asking for waiver from the last three items as well. Because we're not building anything on our, building anything, there aren't drainage plants. So we'll be control plans, we don't want to take subdivision for that. And at this time, don't be state highway access, since it's just a subdivision. We have these waivers and hoping to find the application.
All right, thank you. So. We have a completed application.
I believe we have a completed application.
All right, so let's see here before, if you'd like to withdraw your motion for a second. You're a little ahead of me, I didn't pay attention. We should deal with the waivers first and then decide on the application. So. He's asking for waivers on, on the last, you know, 13, 14, 15, or you want me to go down them or you have them on your list there? I'll have them on your list, pretty much straightforward why he wants the waivers and it makes perfect sense as to why. Does anyone think that any of the waivers should not be granted? Which one?
Number 13.
Okay.
Why would the location of groundwater be?
Because they're not building anything up there. He's just doing a subdivision.
Oh, okay.
That goes along with the rest of the. Because he's just doing the subdivision and proposing to be building anything this time.
And they're. I'm assuming there were no deed restrictions on the property, is that correct? So that one, we don't even need to waive because there were no deed restrictions on this. And there are no existing buildings on there. So we don't need to waive that one. So we need to waive, let's see, we put in that one, that one. So we're waiving item number 13, 14, 15, 17, let's see. Twenty.
Not 50 yet, he's, they did, did the soil.
Oh, did I say 15? Yeah, no, we don't need, no, don't need that one there. Yep, and 20, 21, 22, and 23 are checklist. Is everybody okay with that? It's so, a motion, yes.
You've been up into that topic. There used to be gravel test pits that contain water. Those still there? And are they still? Do we still have water?
Most of the ones that I found were filled with. I had. And then. Not aware of any open test pits in any water today. Certainly wet areas on the property. An area that's fond of.
I wasn't aware that they were, they had been built in. I know that I believe it was Wickham that went up in there and was, was looking for gravel.
Right.
Okay, any other questions about the waivers that were either granting or not granting? And a motion would be in order to grant those waivers to the applicant.
I make the motion to grant the waivers.
Motion by Brandon South to grant the waivers.
Seconded.
Seconded by Michael York, and again to clarify, those waivers are item number 13, number 14. Let's see, number 17. Number 20. Number 21, 22, and 23 of our flat submission checklist. So is there any further discussion? And all those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those opposed? Okay, good. Got that granted now about the completeness of the application. Would you just say the acreage of the three lots on there? I just, it's a little small on this one here.
Yeah, the entire crosswalk is 36.25 acres. We're proposing to create three lots. Smallest lot over in 6.88 acres. And that would be 1997 eight. Next lot, 1997 nine, would be 10.37 acres. And then the larger lot remaining will be 1997 10, would be 19.
Thank you. And as far as the completeness goes of the application?
So.
Motion that the application is complete and ready to go to public hearing?
Correct.
Hearing by Michael York, seconded by Brandon South. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, so we will go to public hearing and I will open the public hearing right now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jim Pickard here on behalf of 234 Old Homestead Realty LLC. This property is located on the north side of Stafford Drive. It's mostly within the industrial park. It's wanting, there's a small portion of the property. Balance of the property is on the. Each of the lots meets your dimensional requirements. It's almost 24, maybe a few of frontage. Among Stafford Drives, it's another 140 feet of frontage. Up here on Route 12 next to the. Clearwater pools. All the access that would be proposed into these lots will come from Stafford Drive. There will be no access. Right from Route 12, the entry to make use already instructed us not even ask for permission to access. So that's understood. No regulations, we exclude wetlands and steep slopes from the lot area calculations. So we provided that information at Sarah's request. On lot A, each of these lots has upland areas that are contiguous and usable and wetlanded. So on the smallest lot, there is 2.91 acres of wetlands, which eliminated by West Hutton. So it's a lot in size. And 3.97 acres of upper. So industrial park requires a minimum of three acres. So we save that. A lot high, a little lot. This would be 10.37 acres in size, 3.12 acres of wetlands, 7.24 acres of upper. And larger lot, 19 acres in size, 10.1 acres, 10.18 acres of wetland, 8.82 acres of upper. The last couple of years, I've spent a lot of time out here working on different construction plans. The good news is, there's a company that has a purchase agreement for what would be 1997 one. So in the next couple of months, we're going to see a site plan application if the subdivision is approved. Or even industrial use of its worth. That's, that was excellent. This area is serviced by town water and town sewer. It's existing, and when they constructed Stafford Drive. And it's adequate to service all of these lots for domestic use. Water system is not adequate for fire protection. So that'll be an issue we'll be addressing in the site plan. So anybody posing large buildings on this property, it's going to have to look at the water protection issue. So it said the access will be required to be from Stafford Drive, the O P won't allow it from Route four. And it will require driveway balance from the town response, obviously for that access.
Are the access points, the proposed access point, access point shown on there? Not yet?
I'm not showing any. It doesn't make more sense, so waiting for the site plans to propose. And they can locate it, determine the site distance and deal with drainage issues. To show where this water pump station is located on Stafford Drive, the town owns that water pump station. That land was taken from this property and added to the right of line with Stafford Drive. So that's all completed with the system. As I know, it's with the. That's it. Simple. Subdivision, get going on that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pickard. Questions from the board for the applicant?
Straightforward to me.
It is a straightforward submission and it looks like something might be happening after. Um, any members of the public here to speak on this, your application? And seeing none and hearing none, if there are no other questions from the board to the applicant, I will close the public hearing. And the public hearing is closed. It looks like he meets the requirements. And it's straightforward. Any other comments? Ready?
For motion?
I'm looking for a motion.
Make a motion, we approve the application for subdivision.
Okay, a motion by Michael York to approve the subdivision.
Seconded.
Seconded by Michael Day. Is there any further discussion? And all those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those opposed? And there you have it, you will. Where you get to work at? That brings us to our next agenda item, and that is planning board number 22 dash zero one seven. And that's a site plan review application and we'll be having a public hearing perhaps. Jonathan Holden has submitted a site plan review application to make improvements to the Lane Field property owned by the town of Swansea, located at 120 South Road and shown at tax map 24 lots two, two dash one and four. The subject property is located in the resident district. And upon a finding that the application meets subdivision requirements. That's not a, all we're doing is subdivision here? Okay, anyways, if, if we find the application is complete, then we will probably move on to a public hearing. So. Uh, yes.
Customers with mobility issues, could we ask Mr. Holden to further accommodate?
Absolutely, yeah. Everybody can see. So just tell us why the application is complete. Give us all the information that you put on there to make it a complete application and we will decide whether it's complete or not and then move along with that.
Sure, so I, I'm president of Swandico from baseball, my name is John Hurton. Been in the business for more than a decade. And I know, it's like two weeks ago, I think, I lost.
Something like that.
Should we still, Michael?
It doesn't matter.
Okay. And they asked for myself to come and talk to the planning board. As a matter of, of going through, of processing town property. And they also wanted to make sure that Mike and Brandon, not Mike, Michael Jasmine over there addressed any concerns from fire or police for the town property. And I believe Michael's done that correctly. So that's, it's not all those types of requirements. And basically, the, the project itself is, I currently tell you, there are six fields of the baseball field. You know, the four on this side of what is the, the road that was going through here, two on the backside.
Let me just interrupt you just for a minute here. Let us read down our checklist of the submission. And if there are any questions as to whether you have them on there and it's incomplete or something, we'll go there. Because those types of things are the, the hearing, public hearing issue. So we'll just, let's just take a look at our, our checklist here, so. Uh, name and address of owner. I would imagine that's on the flat there. Okay, and the tax map and lot number is on there. Okay, and North Arrow on there showing, yep, there it is, I see it, it's up there, right? Isn't that up top there? No. I think it's right up there. Anyways. Anyways, I can see it from here. Yeah, I can see it from here, it's on there. Okay, and name and address of the flat preparer. Okay, sitting in vicinity sketch, that's up there, yep. And a name and address of the budding landowners, they around there, butters?
They were all notified.
They were notified, but they're not on the flat, so let's see, that might have to be a waiver. Okay, physical features and uses of land within 200 feet of the site. And again, that's not on there, asking for a waiver on that one. Perimeter bounty lines and the lot area in square feet and acres. Acres and square feet marked off on that, acres at least? And show the. The volume. We don't have another copy. That's the only one he has, okay. Okay, um, you have other copies right there.
There's, there's, there's copies before that, but I don't think that's.
Okay. Well. Well, just, let's just continue on that. We all know the property there and we do know the subject. But again, we're running out of checklist, checklist, just to make sure the application is complete, that's what we're doing. So shape and size and height and location and use of existing structures on the site and those that are proposed and the dugouts and things shown on that, okay? Uh, location, name and width of any existing and proposed roads on the property, I'm pretty sure they're on there because I saw you're changing some roads down there. Okay. Let's see here. Identification of access from the site to folded streets, site distances from the access points, curb cuts, proposed changes, if any. And yet, those are on there. Seen the drawing, location and number of parking and loading spaces, yeah, you're changing parking on there, right? So that's on there.
People using the roads.
So that's denoted on there, landscape plan, well. Put a waiver on that one because I don't think you're changing any landscaping there, unless you are, no, okay. Location type and nature of all existing and proposed lighting. Um, are you putting lighting out there on the field? That's come up in one of our notations here, so, okay.
What's your, how many?
Not in my pocket. Let's see, okay. Lighting, so we'll put a waiver on that one, no lighting. Natural features such as water bodies. Natural features such as water bodies, ledge, outcropping, wetlands. Put a waiver on that. Existing and proposed grades and topographical contours at five-foot intervals. May or may not be on there. It's a flat field, so there wouldn't be a whole heck of a lot of them on there. Are they on there? No.
Some are.
Okay. Well, I guess you'd be requesting that waiver there. Let's see, size and accurate location of all existing and proposed water mains, culverts, fire hydrants, and fire ponds. I don't think there are any out there, are there? No, so that doesn't. Difference. Means of providing water supply, you have wells out there, is that on there, on the drawing? Okay. Surface drainage patterns, again, it's pretty flat there, so.
They agree with what I'm saying.
Yep. It's a copy of certified by licensed septic design that the system is sufficient for existing and proposed use. There is a septic system on there, right? Right, is that shown on the drawing? Where it is?
No.
Doesn't show?
It's really, it's unknown, it's stated from decades, decades ago.
Okay, so waiver on that one. Location and type of proposed sewage disposal system, again, it's existing, so that does not apply. Location and a, of existing and proposed onsite well showing 75-foot radius. There must be a well on the property. Is that shown on?
It's a water source, it's on the plat.
Okay, it's on the plat. Soil survey, soil survey data from the Cheshire County Soil Survey, and that would be a waiver. Location of any existing or proposed easements, deed restrictions, and our covenants, covenants. Do you know of any for that property there? Are there deed restrictions on there?
Or there's an easement for putt drive. For what? For putt drive that's proposed out back, B J D seven.
Oh, there isn't, is that, is that shown on the drawing? Or any of your other drawings? Is it on there? Okay, that's shown. And architectural plans, and their plans that aren't really anything. Okay, that runs down our checklist. So in a way, they're moving things around, yes. But they've got, what they've got on there, we'll get into that in the public hearing part, showing what we're doing there, what they're doing there. So in the waiver department, we're looking at item number six, seven, eight, 13, 14, 15, 16, 20, and 23 on our checklist there. Does anyone think that they should or should not get any of those waivers? We ran on the list. It's pretty straightforward, we know what we're doing there, as far as what they're trying to do there. And they don't need, I don't think anyways, those items that we are about, only to grant them waivers too, so. Checking it over. Yeah, yeah, it is item number six. Which is names of the buttered and landowners, that wasn't on there. And item number seven, which was physical features and uses within 200 feet there. I'll just separate the numbers, number eight, item number eight. And then item number 13. Let me see if I did. It, it was on there, isn't it? The access from the site to public streets, they have it on there. So, so we don't, they don't need a waiver for that. That's 11. Item number 13, landscape plan. They don't have one, and don't need one, I don't think. And then item number 14, that was the lighting, which they aren't proposing any lighting there. Item number 15, that was a natural feature such as water bodies and things like that. And number 16, grade and topographical contours at five-foot intervals. Item number 20 was about the licensed septic designer. Let's see, and number 23 was a soil survey data from Cheshire County Soil Survey. So that's the list of them there. Everybody in agreement of granting those waivers, or some of them, or none of them?
Yeah, but I have a wall exit number eight.
Are you, see, we had number eight on there. Want me to run down the number?
Just, just give me the waivers for.
Waivers for number six?
Yes.
Number seven?
No, I mean, what is number six cover?
Oh, oh, number seven, name and addresses of all the budding landowners.
Oh.
It's not on the plat.
Okay, then I'm, I'm missing eight.
Okay, number eight was perimeter boundary lines and the lot area in square feet and acres.
Oh, okay.
I don't think it was denoted on the plan.
Okay.
That's right, I forgot, you didn't have a list of our parameters as I was running down there. You've got the rest of them?
I have the rest of them.
Okay. All right. So getting back to the waivers.
Number 21, why, why would it not have to be a location type proposal? And, and do they have a certification by law?
No, they don't. No, not, well, not that I know of it.
It's chill.
Well, maybe it is on there, see.
Who was the question?
A copy of certification by a licensed septic designer that existing system is sufficient for existing proposed use.
I don't have a plan. There is a system that's already approved by the town, town record with the town, yes. I could pump down a few new bases by the town.
So I guess the question is, I guess.
I can verify that, yes.
You can, okay. All right.
And that was item number.
And that was, that was item number 20.
20, okay.
And.
It's okay, I think I've.
We're, we're still considering that as a waiver.
Thank you, thanks, Steve.
Location type of proposed sewage disposal system. The location is or is not on the plans there? I don't think it is on there. And I guess we'll add that one, number 21, as a waiver. They're asking for.
What, what is that for?
That is number 20, that's a location and type of proposed sewage disposal system. They aren't proposing one, they have an existing one, but.
Location of?
The location of, and type of proposed sewage disposal system.
Oh, sewage, okay.
But they have an existing one on it.
Yeah, it's been there.
So they aren't proposing a new one. So I don't think we ought to grant the waiver for 21, or even have an extra waiver for 21. It's an existing system.
But it's also worth noting, if we work on things.
Well, the, the system is there, the code enforcement officers are just verified that the system is there on the site there. But they, they aren't proposing one. Location and type of proposed, that would be, they're putting in a new one there anyway. So I don't know that that's an item that we should even be considering for a waiver because they aren't proposing one. They already have an existing one there. So I don't think 21 should be included in there. So.
You are including 21?
No, we are not.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I don't think so, the board may, I'll vote me on that one.
Understood.
No, okay, so I don't think we're putting it on there. All right, so what about the remaining waivers? Grant them, not grant them?
Grant them.
And would that be a motion from Michael York?
Motion to grant the remotion.
From Michael York to grant the following waivers from our checklist. And again, I'll name them or number them. Number six, number seven, number eight, number 13, number 14, number 15, number 16, number 20, and number 23. Is there a second?
14. 14 says, existing one and proposed lighting.
Yeah.
In some of the things that I read on this application, it was referring to lighting for tournaments.
Well, let's, let's just get a second so we can have a discussion, or, or if there's no second, the motion dies, and we can discuss that. We need to have a motion and a second, and then we'll discuss those things. Or the motion dies without a second, and we discuss those things anyway. Just a matter of procedure is all we're doing. Just a matter of procedure. Anybody want a second then? If not, the motion dies, and we discuss it anyway. I haven't confused you, right?
No.
So did, did I have it? Did we have a second for the motion for Michael York's motion? Nobody's second, okay, so there's no second, so the motion fails or dies right now without a second. So we're talking about lighting.
Right.
And the concern is that there we have in our packet, those letters, talking about lighting.
Only others, but I think it's mentioned, you know, maybe it's, maybe it is in the letters.
But we're, we're considering as a waiver or not a waiver of it. Not the fact that there's lighting there, or what they're going to do with the lighting, just whether we're waiving the fact that it is or is not on the plat. So that is, that is a question we have in front of us.
And it is not on the plat.
It is, yeah, there's no lighting on that plat, I don't believe. There, I, I don't think so. No, it's any, so.
So let's see, those, those lighting, yes, come back before us, correct?
He does, yep. If they plan to change anything that they have, what's existing is existing. And whether or not it's on the plat, it's existing, but lighting, I guess, whatever they have down there for lighting. There is no lighting down there on the field.
No.
As far as building, I mean, buildings, no lighting on the sides of the buildings or anything like that. There's a scoreboard, I don't think.
Cafe, or whatever you want to call it, is lighting.
Individual lighting there, okay. So. And again, that was 20, was it 21 we're talking about? Let me get down here.
No, it was no lighting on number 14.
Oh, yeah, 14. All existing and proposed lighting, so there was no existing lighting on there other than the buildings and the scoreboard. And there's no proposed. So are you suggesting we cross that one out as a waiver? I think you would be suggesting, I wouldn't be suggesting that, now that you brought it up. There's nothing that they're.
It's number 14.
Yes, number 14, we're crossing that one out.
Okay.
So then are we saying that's, are we saying that it's, it, because there is no, it's chart, it's, it's submitted as yes, that, but, but it's not on the plat?
Yeah, it is, they've got it checked off there, but it isn't on the plat, and we aren't giving a waiver for it. And yes, some of these items were checked off, yes. Like the number seven was checked off, yes, but it's not there. But what they checked off and what's really there, it's, it's time for us to decide what's there and what isn't there as we're accepting application, regardless of what they've got checked off on that checklist. Planning board has final say on whether it's a waiver, or whether we want to come back with some more information on those drawings. That's why we're saying whether it's complete or not. So again.
We did a check, yes, but there's nothing up there, so.
Yeah. But again, I don't think anyways, you can deny the application as complete just because they may or may have not checked something that is not on the plat. If the planning board feels that it should be on the plat, they checked it, yes, it's on the plat, planning board feels it should be on there, then they can either not accept it as complete, or they can accept it and have them come back with it on the plat at a future meeting, continue a public hearing, something like that. Or if it doesn't make any difference to the board, then they can just leave it alone regardless of what was checked.
And then we can just address it with the condition that they have to come back if they want that lighting.
If, yeah, if we're concerned about that particular piece of information that they may or may not have left out, then yes, it's the condition, and the method of condition would have to come back from the board. So again, what we're doing here now is deciding whether we have enough information on that plat to go ahead with a public hearing. And we're deciding waivers before we decide that. Back on the waivers. And the waivers, again, are what we're going to allow them to get away with not putting on that plat right there. So, don't we run down the number again, or are we all certain with the numbers? I think we beat this one to death pretty much. So what are we going to do? Yes or no? You're going to make a motion again?
We, we accept the waivers.
We're making a motion to, to grant the waivers. And again, I will read the number down here. Number six, number seven, number eight, number 13, number 15, number 16, number 20, and number 23. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Brandon Self. Is there any further discussion on the waivers? And all those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those opposed? Okay, now comes to the completeness of the application. Do we feel we have information enough to go ahead with a public hearing? Is the application complete enough for that? Anybody? It's either complete or it's not, you know, it's, it's one or the other. You, if, if you don't feel it's complete, let's find out why, and they can come back with whatever we need. If we feel it's complete enough to go to a public hearing, and then bring on forward and go to a public hearing, see what they're proposing. That's what we're doing here. We can't hold them up forever.
I'll move if the application is complete.
Motion by Michael York that the application is complete and ready to go to a public hearing. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Brandon Self. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the application is complete, we're ready to hear your presentation. And again, just before you, this is on town-owned property. And even though the town is exempt from its own zoning regulations, it's a private entity using the town's property. So that's why they're here in front of the board, and they are held to the site plan regs, just like any other private company. So, there you are.
Thank you very much for your time, and for allowing me to come and see. So as we look at the map, today, there are six fields that we operate, Swanki Co. operates on a seasonal basis at the South Loop facility. You have a large one here, Cole, another one, Lane, Whitcomb, Chandler. Currently today, we have Westfield out here in the far back corner, that's at the lane of Mill Lane, then you have O'Brien Field. At this point in time, you also have Putt Drive that goes on the eastern side of the property. Everybody see, I don't want to block any.
Yeah.
And then there's, there's no road, but their name, or pretty close to the middle of the property. And it's been a safety concern for a number of years. Back with Ellen Blood, and Lee Duncan, and Alex Joe DeGusso, and all the folks who spoke a number of times about how do we get rid of that road? And how we make it safer for the kids to play and the kids to enjoy the facility. Well, it's come to a time where these two dugouts have fallen down and deteriorated, and we proposed that we invert the fields that are playing this way, we play this way. Start playing in towards the Cook Shack and the rest of the facility, we play out into the hillside. And then we take and eliminate this road to pursue the middle of the property. Eliminate the 20 parking spaces that are there, and add additional parking here, you want was Westfield. And it's really a safety matter extensively in that regard. And giving up a field is not ideal for us, not ideal for the kids. We had a record number this year of almost 300 children that came and played. Swanki Co. is not made of just one children. It's made up of Richmond, Fitzwilliam, Troy, and Winchester, a large number of kids that come to that area. All the kids go to Monad Night Schools, plus Winchester, instead of the Catholic program. But it's really a safety concern, and that's what we did, what we did in terms of layout, and accounting a soccer field in the out, in the out, outer part of the, the outfield of that. So that's really how we've done in terms of the fields, eliminating it. It's strictly a safety concern, building to new dugouts, that'll do better for better use and better safety, as we're continuing to build a new dugout over here on this field that fell apart a few years ago. We have a maintenance center here, and four batting cages that we built a few years back, and eliminated one batting cage that was there, and an old maintenance center that had deteriorated, rotten away. But I'll be happy to entertain any questions that anybody has from the board or from the public.
Okay, so what you're doing is you're eliminating one field?
Yes.
And you're not replacing it with another field? You're eliminating that field, and you're, looks like you're replacing with parking.
Yeah.
That parking is going to exit now onto Mill Lane, is that correct?
Correct, like where the parking currently already.
It's all going to go, be filtered out to, to Mill Lane and then down to South.
Currently, it would be the same place where the parking is today that goes out onto Mill Lane.
No, with it, with it, that road that goes all the way through, people can go out that way also, onto South.
Right, but the, but the majority of them, because of this, this access here, they go up this way and down the other way.
It's going to be a lot more of them, if you've got 56 more marketplaces over there on the west, with the west fields.
We, we put in what is, what is the design.
Four years ago. I had, I had. My name is John Blood.
Oh, thank you.
Okay?
Yep.
I've lived, I've lived up on that lane for thirty-four years. And I have dealt with Mr. Holden for five or six. Four or five years ago, I, there was meetings. You propose, it was proposed that you do away with the west field, you make that park. Okay? Never happened, alright? Still used as a softball field. Mr. Holden, Schlagman, the chief of police, God knows who else. What's that, that mean? They did all what they wanted to do, and they left Westfield exactly the way it was. They removed a bunch of trees, made parking of the whole edge of Mill Lane. And it worked real well for a while here. Currently, this year. Whole parking area was washed out. So people couldn't park off the road, they parked. Notes to tail all the way to Mill Lane, blocking. Mill Lane, so the Mill Lane has one road, one route, you haven't, you couldn't pass cars on it anymore because people don't block my traffic. Another thing that was promised was, that was gonna be addressed. They'd be out there directing people where they should be and doing it. And the time I've been there in the last four or five years, it's been a thirty, thirty-five foot motorhome parked on my property and probably four or five feet out in the road several times, has been wreckers, towed in cars, has been pit stops, trailers. Park logs, South Road, any way they want, nobody addresses it. You can't find Mr. Holden because Mr. Holden is a terrible liar. Police chief said that there'd be a police presence up there, there's no police. I see a police car, they'll buy my eye. Maybe once a month, maybe. Nobody wants to be anywhere near that field. When it's, when they're playing. Because everybody does exactly what they want. Nobody addresses it. You can't smoke on the field. People walk across Mill Lane, red Mill Lane, smoke their cigarettes. Putts everywhere they want to, same thing with South Road, there's no alcohol. If you, if anybody was observing, you could see the people going back to their cars up on Mill Lane and having their beer or whatever they're drinking, then they go back to morgue, nobody is addressing it. It's a problem. I don't see where changing O'Brien, the direction of O'Brien Field is gonna solve anything except make it more attractive to more teams, to make more revenue.
And the parking, you don't think it'd be alleviated?
I don't think the parking's gonna be anywhere near sufficient, now there's no parking on Mill Lane, on that segment at all.
Would you point Mill Lane out, would you point Mill Lane out on there, that drawing please, right there?
None on the road, on the, on their progress.
That's your property.
After the trees, they're still there, I mean, you took three quarters of our trees down that were on that road.
Of the town street.
And left, now, right now, we have piles of wood chips.
Wood chips, where they've already started this renovation without any approval by anyone. They've taken the trees down, they've taken.
They're here now, and, and I don't know about, I don't know about the trees they took down, again, it's town property. Whether the trees had anything to do with this project or not, I don't know, but if the, the town owns a property and they wanna take the trees down, they're probably gonna take them down.
I'm sure you don't know, sir.
I don't, but.
And I don't mean to make any disrespect.
I understand.
Wouldn't be doing it if they didn't need, need to look at this area and stuff.
Okay. So, again, we're addressing what they have proposed now, and do you think that that will make things worse is what you're talking about?
I believe that it'll make that
In re- In regards to what? And, and again, your property is, would you point out his property, do you know where his property is? Right there, okay, you were but right where.
So you don't get over. That's a very, that's a very awful of a problem. But they don't have enough parking, and they're gonna use that Bill Lane parking again, nobody is going to police it.
Well, there, that is a, a different, policing it is different from, from what we're talking about here, but yeah, I understand your concern on that. I'm just trying to see, I think somewhere I saw in here that they were adding parking spaces in there.
There are, I think it's fifty-six spaces.
Let's see.
Where Westfield used to be.
It says the elimination of Westfield softball field leaving a total of five fields for eighty-six dedicated parking spaces, bringing the total of, to a hundred and thirty-six dedicated parking spaces. So how many are being added on where that field was? Is that the eighty-six that we're talking about? You've got eighty-six parking spaces over there? And where are the rest?
The rest, down here.
Oh, right there, okay, I see.
Number of parking spaces around here as well.
So.
There's parking spaces in part of the batting cages.
So the new eighty-six parking spaces, where are they accessed from? What was the road?
From off of Mill Lane.
From that, that new lane, okay, I see.
And today we would, we're eliminating these twenty or thirty parking spaces that are here and enhancing it to the forefront. I would strongly suggest as a planning board, make sure that the parking is addressed or that you call the field. Parking won't be addressed. Unless, if the field is all, that's why.
It will, you know, regardless of which one they address first, if it's on the drawing, it will have to be addressed, you know, they may do it at the same time, I don't know. We don't. Then they get a visit by the code enforcement officer. They get a visit by code enforcement, because they aren't the town, they're a separate company running, you know, their leasing space or however they're getting down there, but they are not the town, so they are not exempt from the site plan rights, which is what we're discussing here.
I have several questions that I don't know if I'll answer.
Just, as I say, I have one more question here, but then, then we'll get to the public. Um, you said that it was a problem of cars coming across, uh, you had mentioned before there.
Coming through the middle.
Yeah, through like that, so how are you gonna alleviate that?
So the field is gonna take into the parking existing parking here.
Fencing is gonna be in there or something? So it'll be a physical barrier that they aren't gonna be driving through there?
Took it through on the track and it was a lot more than that, that's it.
Why is that field being bigger? Dimensions of the, of the field, oh, yeah, it'll be probably ten, twenty feet bigger than it is today.
Kids, kids are hitting part of the walls, technically it's gonna be about sixty thousand dollar net, any outside of the bowl, bats are changing, so people wanna hit part of the walls.
Okay, any questions from the board?
Okay, as he finishes his presentation of all aspects of things.
Yeah, yeah, he did, he finished his presentation.
Can you explain the parking, proposed parking sheet? I guess idea of is it gonna be paved, unvaved, basically marked spots? Um, I know my son's playing with the, the spot on the, right on South Road. Yeah, without any markings, people park all sorts of ways and.
So, so I'll just dispark each place first, uh, Michael. The town, we haven't done anything with this parking in a long time, and there's a couple reasons why, because of the drain. So there are two culverts here, uh, storm drains on either side of Mill Lane, they were connected, they didn't go anywhere. They dug up the road, they now play these two culverts into, across underneath the road, you'll see the work, it's huge. There's also a culvert in the middle of this parking lot, which is now being connected to those culverts, so all that water will drain. Once that none, um, had a company donate twenty hard loads of hardback, so that will become a hardback parking. That's that parking area, this parking here will remain grass and they have some hardback, uh, removal, not removal, enhancements when we remove the bleachers on the dugouts.
And I'm gonna regress. And if he's out on South.
Which, which you refer to?
When you've been pointing to what.
I just pointed up here, this one.
Yeah, he had said the down one does, and the lower one does go out on the South Road, but getting back to Mr. Day's question there, how are you gonna delineate where the people park? Because if they, you know, first guy comes in parks this way, it's only parks that way, you know, we have had other, even though they're gravel, we have had other places and I think the amusement place up here comes to mind that they still had to line the parking area.
Yeah, we, we planned to come up with a plan, Mike, Michael laid out the number correctly, so this, this won't be that hard to delineate. The backside of the, the, neither will this here, this will be more, more cumbersome to line up this year, we'll do something to.
But by doing what, putting like a, I don't know, not a headstone, but you know, the, uh, it's like a stop, entire stop in front of each, where each parking place goes.
I don't know that we'll do that, I think we may do it by signs. Spot one, spot two, spot three, and try to align it up that way, something like that, I mean, it's temporary, because the last thing we wanna do is make something that's very permanent and have a lot of construction in it and create any impervious soil, soil.
It looks like the parking is a pretty integral part of this, this site plan here, so any approval probably would have you as a condition delineate where all of those parking spaces are.
Sure, we can, we can delineate, we can delineate these spaces and however we're gonna do with, with cans and, and buckets, like we do with concrete buckets, we need to, we can make, sure. Or we can make, we're gonna double up the ones on the backside there, so it's a double, one side and the other side.
Is there any, um, consideration for larger vehicles, you know, the RVs or, you know, especially tournament weekends and people come with?
We've had, I think we had one trailer this year, and they, and they parked the way down here out of the way.
Not out of the way. I'm sorry.
We'll get to it, we'll get to it.
Okay, so they, they parked down here, um, and, and that was, we don't really encourage, we, we don't allow them, there was one over here that decided to do some cooking and they were asked to leave. Not allowed by fireworks, but other than that, very limited times, we have RVs, very limited times.
Do you allow them to back overnight?
No, it's town property. And that's not regulated by, that's really by town. So. I don't encourage it, and I don't.
Any other questions from the board members?
On your South Road parking. I'm trying to remember, are there not fence lines along, um, Mill and part of South?
So, on this corner here, there's like three or four sections of wooden fence and three or four sections of wooden fence here.
Your, your access in and out of that parking area is abandoned. What I'm saying is, it is not an easy situation there, you have no real flow. You know, people come in there and just park, hold a skeleton. And a lot of times, some people get blocked in there because there is no radiated parking and there's no flow. Uh, you know, exit out, this is only one way or whatever. I think, you know, as part of your plan, need to improve some sort of traffic flow through those areas. As I say, it's a mess that you're having right now.
I mean, I don't know that maybe cars get blocked in there, they would say it's a mess now because of the type of soil it's there.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying they get blocked in, because I've been blocked in there, okay? So you need to figure out and design something with a traffic flow for it. Right now, to me, it's not an acceptable situation.
But it's existing, we're not changing that at all. Just so you understand, I'm not changing that aspect at all, we're, we're not, we're, we're trying, we're, we're the town, so. And to, and to, and to fix a drainage issue, we have not that's, the town, the, the, if that, the town, if you look in the ass, the town had a pavement, something like that, or enhanced in that regard. I mean, the town doesn't give money towards, towards the field at all. We don't pay to use the field, they don't owe us a week, they take the trash once a week. We rely heavily on our donations, we've put already over two hundred thousand dollars into the property in the past ten years. Um, donations and everything, so, uh, I guess what, this parking here is, has been there for decades.
I understand that it has been there for decades.
But if it's not working, it's an existing condition, but if it's not working and the planning board views the whole site plan when we look at something, not just one particular part of the site plan, and that's part of the site plan there, so, um, yeah, if that's a problem with getting in and out of there, it shouldn't be too much of a problem for you guys to line that out somehow and set it up so it works better, if it doesn't work, you know, and I don't know, I haven't been there, but apparently you have.
Yes.
So the parking, sounds like the parking is your biggest issue then.
Absolutely, that, that parking is, is a secondary issue to the safety, absolutely, that's why we're addressing it here.
So any other questions from the board, yes or no?
I think one of the things that you were trying to say, and possible solution is people don't park their cars, they abandon their cars. And wherever it starts, it starts. Um, there is a white, how, kind of like what they use, uh, to line the baseball.
Yeah.
If that can be put down, you know.
Yeah, well, however, they, apparently, they probably aren't marked at all now, I don't know, are they? They aren't marked at all now, so anything would be improvement or not being marked at all, whether it's the cement, uh, you know, posts that you're talking about or in a bucket, that thing, or the white lines or a combination of both of them. Just so people know where to park, because, right, and it'll be beneficial to you because you'll be able to get more cars in there, you'll have to be parked on the road and people upset about that too. That many, one hundred and thirty-six, I think, total or something like that in there, anyway, it's quite a few. Any other questions from the board before it turn over to public for questions? And ma'am, you had a question or two?
The last name again? Troemley, T R O N E L Y. Thank you. I'm the butter on I have a whole bunch of questions around parking, I'll just kind of fill them up because they're all part of the probably the same answer. So who actively monitors and addresses issues when there is a problem with parking? That's, I'm already, that's something I'd like to see addressed by the planning board. Are there any size restrictions on vehicles because it is very tight parking? How do you describe it, people abandoning their vehicles on parking, that's pretty accurate, people just kinda pull in where it's convenient or where they can squeeze in. And for me, I had issues getting out of my driveway and a minivan, which my minivan can't get out because of someone squeezing in between no parking signs that they weren't quite in front of, but it's a quad, they should park everything too tiny ways. Then a, an ambulance isn't gonna get into my house, a fire truck isn't gonna get into my house. But from a safety concern, I share the same concern that John does with safety, because the kids don't think of any of those good drive, the thing that goes through, they don't think of any of that as roads. To them, that's all part of the fault, and they're running everywhere. The way the cars park now, I use the term park, literally. You can like itch your way out and there can be a kid right there, or even an adult, someone's gonna get seriously hurt on town cross. Which would be a shame regardless of who. So I would like to see on the plant, the planning board, any place that someone is willing to park should be noted, because right now there's fencing going up, John will put out where that fencing is. We did that a few years ago between the league and, and myself, and that helped with some parking, people sort of park recently there. Uh, but that's not parked out there, they're parking all over South Road, parallel to the road, I can't believe they stay allowed that, honestly, but they can stay. Um, it's, it's line of sight issue on both sides, they're all in, um, there's a lane field there on the right where there's a big grassy area, the, the field is in the front, this closes my car every time.
With them?
With them. Um, there's a grassy area just outside of the fence line, but then people park there all the time, go out there, well, right now, because it just rained a little bit, it's gonna be flooded. You can park it all over the place, and you gotta try to easily way around to, to get up to the maintenance shed, to get up to the PJ deceptive, to get into my driveway. to get into my driveway, or even just to like get in there and park to participate in the things and facilities being used for. Um, I would request that no parking be allowed there, other than put in some handicap spots, so the people that really need to be near the field that their kid's playing at can park here there. Everybody else should be able to walk from the designated parking space, it's not that far.
Which part do you mean?
That I, that where they park now is not marked on there, that grassy area.
All these, all these spots here?
No, on the fence, that's fine, that's okay to park in, I mean, it should be, it should be marked so that people.
You say from here to the road, like where are you talking about?
So it's the, Whitcomb Field is right here, and then this is kind of like that dirt road, it's not really a road, all in here is grass and practically wetlands right now, and a lot of dirt. People park all in here, all over the place, sometimes double in, they're parking this way behind them, some of them are coming up in here, which is where they're like, this is my driveway. It's not marked on here, it's parking. I don't think it should be parked, but people park their net. So if this is the plan that's going to address parking, the whole site plan, then if it's marked as parking, let them park there, if it's not marked as parking, then somebody needs to be held responsible to not letting people park there, that's our.
You plan on using some of that for parking?
Absolutely, we use it today, we continue to use it, it's grass, visibility, they park in the center of the tailgate and watch the game. Find it to grandparents, it's all the young kids, absolutely.
And as long as they park on that side, what we're talking about, they're not blocking your driveway.
It's town property, it's all fence, it's all.
Well, not by our driveway, is it? By our driveway, it's town property?
Uh, we're trying to.
This is all, this is all town property.
With the right of way.
The right of way.
And no one's disputing the parking along the fence, I think you could get even more parking out of that if you marked it off in some ways, so people can leave. And if you're gonna park on the grass area, then delineate it somehow, because someone always should look at it from a safety standpoint. Because South Road is coming around a curve on this side, approaching it, and it's 40 miles an hour right there. They'll go 40 miles, they go faster. So they're coming around South Road, and there's just this jungle of vehicles, like right there. So, my main concern with the parking is, it doesn't feel like there's enough. And because it's not being managed, what's already not enough is already less than it could be. So I would request that part of the site plan be dealing with overall parking, how does it get designated? Who's the management? Park it on the plan, have a way to communicate with the participants in the program job of where they should park, have a way to manage it. And then, it's all out in the open, people know what's happening, so we can't all fight about why these people park the way they are, because they're all open.
And that's what I'm going to do in force.
Yeah.
First, kind of a problem.
And I guess my other, my other question around parking is, when these designated spaces are designated on the plan, and maybe even in real life, what happens when they're full? Where is the overflow going? What is the plan for the overflow? Um, you want to get to right now, but those are the questions that I have. As a size restriction on vehicles, because there, there are some pretty large vehicles that come in, and if you're going to allow them, then have a place where they can park and not just hang the butt out that way into South Road. There, we talked about the material that's going to be used. The parking along South Road, parallel to South Road behind Fields, right in there, people park there, they put out their ECEs there and watch games, that's their choice to do, but then they park right there, so they're, you know, hanging out into the road a little bit. Maybe the group can park, I have other questions, like why would they dig their fields? We kind of answered that, I guess that makes sense.
Absolutely, so this field here is about, about 205, this one's going to be 210, 220, or something like that. But we had to put up a $16,000 fence here, because about to get a bigger, and we're going out. Two eliminated, 90% of the home run, we're putting up the fence, this field will have a large field, this will cater to, to those, like I say, margin backs and everything, so.
And, and the kids that are hitting these falls farther, the bats are all the swan's deep, or school age children from the Nebraska School District, and just.
1200.
Okay, so we're not making a bigger field to accommodate other groups that might sublet for a year?
We don't, we don't sublet anybody.
You're not anymore doing that?
We'll never sublet.
And that's how it's phrased when we agree with sublet.
We don't get.
Between you and town.
Right, we're, we're allowed to let other of these junior swamp bats, New England Ravens, other organizations do come and play in 1200 with kitchen swamp, absolutely.
Okay, so that's the fallen under as well?
Absolutely, so everything is 1200. Because we only have 57 each, and what I mean by that is pitching mound, it's 50 feet back, and 70 foot to the bases. That's to be played on that field, it will be played on this one. On this field here, we have 4660, which is the nine to 10, which has a 46 pitching mound, 60 foot between the bases. These here just have 60 foot between the bases, flat surface, no mounds, no mound, ruin the speed a little bit. By doing this, this, having a better field here, will give us much more versatility and usability, because we can not only have games here and here, or here and here, whereas today we can't.
At the same time.
At the same time, absolutely.
So, this is all from what you just said, so compared to right now, you could essentially have multiple games going on at the same time as the plan, and don't have as many multiple games going on right now.
Incorrect, because today we, today we use all six fields on Saturdays. We, we accommodate all these, and weekdays, we use all six fields to accommodate these. So when you have 300 kids and you have so many teams, you only have so much to, to do, and we leave Fridays open for rainouts.
I'm just, yeah, I'm just trying to understand what you said about.
For age, for age, for ages, so for agents, strictly for ages. We're, we're using all the fields at all at the same time.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand what the, what the initial impetus for this remodel.
Safety.
Was.
So we aren't going to go and put money into roofs here, and, and, and dugouts that were falling over, with, with blocks that were falling over, to put money into, there was no point in it. To do this project will cost, it's material alone, $77,000. No labor, and the labor's being done.
The additional parking or the shooting of the park, it's kind of like.
It's been, it's been, it's been a long time, especially with the selectmen, it's been a long time, especially with public workers, to get rid of the runoff. Absolutely, and the safety concern, absolutely, that's, that, if you start, you start with the safety, then you have a ripple effect of putting bad money into good, uh, good money into bad structures, it's.
Yeah, okay, yeah, and I, I actually, I'd like to go on record, because it's been indicated before, that the neighbors are, the kids at Swansea having fun playing ball, and that's not true, I just want, or at least speaking for myself, I just want it managed, I want it to be safe, okay, everybody, um, you know, people, just want to co-capitate together well, and parking, since I've lived there for almost 30 years, and always will be issued that, and just disrespectful people doing stupid things that where they choose to sublet, I'm considering that, but you can address the parking, and a comprehensive plan, that would go a long way in my opinion. If it's making it safer, making it more pleasant for everybody that's there, change, take some liability off of the Swansea, so we don't get hurt because of the way people lap property, and so everything for the neighborhood will get together just for co-ops instead of, and you're not. Um, I have one other question, not related to parking, you want me to hold it from here?
No, let's hear it.
Um, the application referenced a scoreboard, and notice that was sent to the board, we're talking about a scoreboard, but on the plan, it's an announcer's booth, I think. The code enforcement, something like decimal levels, and announcer booth, so I have some questions around announcer's booth, when will that be used? How will that be managed? What's the notice level that all those many kind of like, good neighbor kind of questions, who will have access to it? Just games, what do we use on practices? Why is it needed?
It's only used, it's only used for the month, second, third, fourth, and weeks of June, and first week of July.
And those are tournaments that currently are happening there now, and you just use something like that about formal.
Like, and it's not for a beach.
How do you announce it now?
We have a purple sound system.
Sorry, that would be, continue, you've got this, and have two competing, or you're gonna have just one that you're helping out?
Oh, we have two competing, as, as it is today. We have one, normally we have one called for 11 and 12, and we have one at the length, length of our nine to 10, and when I say 11 and 12, I mean year olds and nine and 10 year olds.
And where is your permanent going? I can't see it, as I just pointed out.
The, the permanent, it's going to go over here, we're gonna put a new dugout here, I'm probably gonna put a square, scoreboard each, not a scoreboard, a score station either behind home plate or on top of the third base dugout, TBD. It's all determined, I'm looking for the nice stuff from.
Okay, and did you have more questions on that?
Just one last thing, just regarding what the site plan, and what's on there and what's not on there. We have an agreement, it's apparently still supposedly going to be done in July, we have four days, but it happened, of something by people are fencing over the, the property line.
The fencing will get done on this, on this.
That's why I'm not, we don't have to get into like the, yeah, but it should be noted on the plan, if that's something that's supposed to happen.
It's in the, it's in, it's in the letter that was sent to you and I.
And where are that fencing going, this?
So there's, there's a, there's a long fence here, it's not even on this plan, that we installed from the corner of Chris, Christine, Christine, Christine's driveway. Four, 400 feet long, and we're adding another 75 feet to it.
I just want it to be on the plan, because this is going to be a, you know, it's a document, it's a record of what it looks like.
I think it's, but I think it's a letter to you and I, like, for.
Yeah, that's fine, but other people in town don't see the letter between you and I.
That's correct, or the town, the town, town, you and I, excuse me.
So, I would just request that it was a fencing structure, and it's, the all of them's going to happen, from the plan. And one of your checklist questions was, are there any deed covenants, and are they all listed on there, there are, right away, but I think.
Absolutely.
I'm not sure it matters, but since I'm a precise kind of person, there is a deed covenant on Whitcomb, the, the deed, the law that covers Whitcomb Field, there's actually a language in the deed that says, for exclusive use by Thomas Swansea for recreational purposes. Which, you know, it is, but it's a deed covenant, you ask about it, and then just like that.
For the record, thank you.
I already want to provide the kids, everything, she's a boss, and needs your vision.
Yep, you're probably right.
Another question.
Could you identify yourself for our record keeper, please?
I'm sorry, the first name? Sandra Blood. Thank you. This field, it's for game day, for design, okay, this dugout right here is sitting on the beginning of a hill. Which means it goes all the way across, does that mean that these will be on a hill too? Or are you going to take that hill down?
It's a flat spot, it's right over the hill before.
It can't be flat, it's a hill. It's a hill there, and it comes down into the.
We're not putting parking in there.
And it looks like, it looks like they're going to put the parking on the flat.
Fly there every year.
Yeah, they, they, no, I am, the kids fly down that hill, I've walked down that hill with my cats many times.
So if you go on the foul line, foul pole all the way over, the foul pole is on the flat spot.
Where is it, what pole is that?
That's the foul pole, that's right there.
What is that, what I have no idea.
It's a foul pole, it's, it's the foul, it's the third base foul pole from this field here, and that's on a flat spot, that's where.
And for third bases?
No, that's the outfield, before going off the hill, it's the pole that's in the ground in country.
And you, and you can't put that many cars in it, there's no way you're going to be able to fit that many cars. I don't know who's measuring, who's part measuring the cars, but there, you know, why?
Well, it'll be checked to make sure that they fit on there when code enforcement takes a look at it.
It's gonna have to be marked, there's gonna.
Yeah, they'll have to be marked.
Somebody's going to be enforcing, but if it's marked on there, I mean, on the ground, for a sign of rain, it's the line that they use to mark will be gone. It won't be replaced, and then it will be held with skeleton again, so it's.
Yep.
If I could make one comment.
I'm not going to bother, but, you know, I'll be.
You, you guys.
You just don't get it, just don't understand it.
Okay.
Drive around through there about three or four times a week for a month, and watch it and see it, they're, you know, they're sitting here, you don't learn it. But when you're involved in it, and I'm, I'm there 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and I watch it, I can't help it, it's right in front of me.
And again, it sounds like the parking is the main issue there, cars and, again, it sounds like cars and the parking are the main issue there for you.
That's right, it's kind of an issue for.
And it's, it'll be an issue for the planning board as well.
It's an issue since, yeah, people other than the Swansea teams were allowed to play there. With the swan. Then the other people were not there, the Swansea teams were there, they didn't have anywhere near this problem. They didn't, they didn't, I don't think that they used it much on Saturdays or Sundays or holidays. You know, they go every day a sunshine's from, I don't know, April 1st to, to at least play with it.
They're using, they're using the field, I get it, and using the fields more, correct?
That's just the way it is, and I understand.
So we'll be, we'll be addressing that, you know, that's as part of us addressing that with the parking and stuff, that they're getting more use out of the field, so we're gonna see if we can do something about that, and Mike Jasmine has some.
So, to your point, Mr. Jarrett, it seems that the, no, there's passive, I think parking is a problem, as you point out, and, and enforcement's going to fall on me, it's Ms. Trombley's point, I think she makes a good one. We did take the time to draw the parking in here to scale, you know, at reasonable, as long as this survey's correct, at reasonable confidence, we can fit where we can fit. I think this scaled out to what Mr. Hoden already said that they are getting, and then when, when it's organized. But I think to Ms. Trombley's point, because we did take the time to do this, and because we're doing this so that it can be enforced, it's in our best interest to make sure that this parking, if there is.
Absolutely, yeah, any parking that's going to be there, it needs to be, yeah.
Okay, so we'll delineate the parking here, delineate the parking on the fence, delineate the parking on the backside of the maintenance side of it, delineate parking in front of the batting cage in this area here, that's not a problem.
Yeah, where, where are we going to have the parking on there, definitely, it has to be noted onto the plat, as well as the extension of that fence that you referred to a while back.
Okay, I guess one of the, one of the things that our board has struggled with is giving up the field.
Yep, but.
So you're, we're giving up 20% of the capacity, so the numbers, the less, well, less people there at any given time.
Less people there, what?
At any given time.
Any given time.
Instead of having six games, we're going to have five.
Okay.
So you're going to take 10 kids, times two teams, you get 20, and each, each parent brings a car, or something, you get 20, 30, 40 of those cards.
For each game, you think?
Yeah, well, every time you're going to do six fields, and the, the only time we're using six fields, only time we're using six fields is from the last Saturday of April vacation until the la, first Saturday in June. We don't use all six fields any other time, except those Saturdays and those weekdays for regular seasons. Because this field here, which is Whitcomb, and this field here of Chandler, cannot host anything, except kids eight and under, if that, some of the eight, eight-year-olds can put them out of those field, so those fields don't get used. So you're really talking about three fields that are going to be of large money use. And it's come tournament time, and then those days become long, because you have games at eight in the morning, 10:00, 30:00, noon, whatever, throughout the whole day. But really, the only time that we found, and this year I had to be out of town one, one, one night when they were using all six fields, and I know there was an incident, but the police took care of it. But the other, otherwise, really, the only time you ever get all six fields, and we get close to 500, 600 people there, and it's grandparents, and everybody who wants to come, it's opening day, it's the day we give out the volunteer of the year award, and those sort of things.
Still have to have a place to put their cars, yeah, that's what boils down to, and that's what we're talking about tonight.
And we, we, we formerly used to lease the property that was abandoned over here for a couple of years, from the lady, and that's being rebuilt now, um, but no. We, I, I fully get, well, we can outline some parking in here for you, and the parking along.
All right, so I, I think that, you know, we've talked about the parking quite a bit, we know what the problems are there, and mainly has to do with parking and other things, I think. It mainly has to do with parking and other things. I think that we ought to continue this until our next meeting and give the applicant a chance to delineate all the parking spaces on the drawing that he intends to use, as well as the fence on there. Let's see, anything else on there? There, it was a fence extension up there, correct? Yep. And parking spaces and they're on the plat, then definitely we can take a look at it at our next meeting, decide how many are there and go from there.
So it is. So I guess my, my question, my question to you is, when is the next meeting?
Let's see, it will be the eleventh, the eleventh of August.
Eleven of August.
Yes.
So we've already been, begun construction, and we can continue construction, correct?
Um, that's code enforcement. Actually, technically, you can't because you haven't done the site plan review process, but neither here than there, nor they are. What we're doing tonight here is if you want parking on that plan and it wanted to show up to your maximum amount of parking, it's gotta be denoted on that plan.
Yeah, no problem. I will be glad to denote the parking. So other than the parking.
The parking and the fence.
Other questions that need to be addressed?
Other than the fact that you're gonna mark those parking spaces, because it is no question why people park all over the places, because they don't know exactly where to park. People will follow lines. And if it was any other, if it was a business we're deciding on in there or any other type of, of application, we'd have to have those parking spaces marked on there. So this is no different than that. So you're gonna have to figure out a way or come up with a way and present it to the board, how are you gonna mark those?
So you want, you want, you want the grassy areas marked?
Um.
If you're gonna use it.
If, if you're gonna, yeah, park there or put cars there somehow to mark them, just to let people know that, yeah, you're gonna park, and it's okay to park.
So parking's permitted, parking permitted sign.
And the lines in your parking spaces there would show them that, you know, cars are lined up in a specific way, they fit maximum in there.
So if we put up a sign, delineate, because we're not gonna go and delineate all the grass here.
Probably not, probably not, but right, the sign says parking, everybody probably get the idea that, yeah, you park along the road like they've been doing, parking along the road by the sounds of it, just a second. By the sounds of it, they've been parking along there anyway, correct?
They've been parking along the shore, absolutely.
Um, yeah, but on your property, or on the teller.
Yeah, absolutely.
So we need it marked on the plan. Steve, you had a question?
Once again, I don't know what type of paint it is.
What type of what?
Paint.
Paints for the, for marking it?
But you can get a paint that you can put on grass and it's more permanent than the chalk.
Well, we'll leave it up to them to decide what to do. If it's, if it's not acceptable, then it's not acceptable and we'll have them come back.
So, so that I know what is acceptable.
Okay.
We're, we're, we're gonna make a sign or two here that's gonna denote how to park.
Okay.
Same thing for these parks this year. We're not gonna label the parking, the parking actual space.
You're gonna draw them on the ground.
I'll draw them, I'll, I'll draw a map on the map and put some signs up to please either back in or pull in, and, and the same thing here. But to go and try to make spots on the grass that haven't been there for.
No, that'd be obvious where to park, because there, obviously there's some sort of a road that goes up there, but, but where the large parking lots are that you have there, you're gonna have to put some kind of lines there, because people aren't gonna know where to line their cars up. Some kind of.
I understand that, or, or we could do the buckets with the signs on.
That too, but on both of them.
Bucket with the signs, and we've got a mission public works, we're fine, because they're the ones who always use the motor.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, so that can be.
And they already, there's, got a lot of property.
So, yeah, you need to check with public works if they may do the maintenance there, for sure. If you're gonna put buckets in their way, they aren't gonna like that at all. But there's, there are different ways, I'm sure, you can come up with to mark those spaces there, but they need to be marked, because people are, you're, you're wasting your space to park cars there and it's overflowing onto places where it shouldn't.
Right, but at the same point in time, if you take this parking here immediately, if you, if you, even if you got fifty percent, you're picking up forty new parking spaces.
That's great.
On top of the other issue.
That's good, but it needs to be marked out so.
I understand, I understand.
So you go over with public works department as to what they will accept and what they won't accept for this, since they do the maintenance there. That's a good point. And delineate the rest of them on the plat and the fence. Anything else I've left out?
Can we take consideration for the soccer program that the town does run there and all?
Meaning consideration, meaning what?
Just making sure that all the fields will still be laid out, we were playing out soccer fields. I can't obviously see this handle. But making sure that we do run a soccer, large soccer field between West and Orion right now for our eight to twelve table age group.
I've missed your point. Do you mean that the parking would be taking up some of the soccer field?
My issue is just making sure that there's enough space, or, okay, if there is enough space in the field to go in.
Or the field could actually do that, the field could actually come down, we've done the business with that field down.
As long as that back fence is gonna be a moveable fence.
That feels scaled, it's like on a level there.
Yes.
And it's scaled, it's not gonna go down that way.
Okay, it looks like there'll be room for that, even with their new parking. Okay, so unless there are other questions, any from the public on this, you had another question?
Process question for you guys. If it was a, a business or an entity of some kind coming into Swansea and wanting to set up the use of a particular area, they would have to designate parking and is there any guidance from the town or state in terms of number of available parking spaces per number of people showing up at a business or a facility, or any kind of ratio?
Right, we do have in our parking recreational facilities, I don't recall off the top of my head. We have different designations of our parking density for different types of uses there.
Yeah, and I'm asking because, you know, I'd like to see it all on, on the plaque that you, you've asked for. You've been talking about it in real life, which I think would be important too, but when it's on the plaque, will someone be able to look at that and say, there's X number of spaces? And.
Yeah, we will.
How we're doing, how many people show up at any given time and what's that ratio and does it fit in with the guidance that you want?
Our planning department.
One of the next steps?
The planning department will review it again when they have it all on there, as well as the planning board will, but the planning department looks at it first anyway. And if it is.
Solid road is a state road, is it not?
I believe it probably is, yes.
Yes, it's a true.
Don't you need a permit of some kind to have a parking lot empty onto a state road?
Uh, as long as they're.
Do you have one?
Is there, as long as it's a curb cut there, then they've got their curb cut.
I'm sorry?
They have a curb cut there, don't they?
Yes.
To go into that, so, so that's what the state requires them to have a curb cut, you know, a way to get in there and a way to get out. Uh, if, if it was to change of use, something like that, we'd notify the state because it was a change of use. This has been used as a ball field for a long time, so they're just uh, expanding it, or actually they aren't expanding it, but they're expanding the park.
Just here.
Yep, that's, that's what, that's what that is.
Think I'll go a little bit better.
Okay, if there are any other questions from the board members or the public? Yes.
But it's not about this, but before you turn off the Zoom, I just wanted to make sure if you could tell me why it's not working. I couldn't get the Zoom to work, so I came in person.
Oh.
So just before you just devote on, at leave, I just wanted to keep the Zoom on, Sarah, and I wanna figure out why it's not working.
Okay, yep, well, well, we've got a few other items to check out with. Okay, thank you.
Ready?
Okay, if, if there are no other questions from the board or the public, then a motion to continue the public hearing to our next meeting with this August eleventh, would be in order. Okay, a motion by Michael York to continue this public hearing until August eleventh, and there's a second by Richard Lane. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, or indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And you know what your job is, right? You're gonna delineate parking, all the parking you're gonna use there, and the fence on up there, and resubmit it, and we're gonna have a look at it.
But in the meantime, we can still go ahead with demolition and construction.
Uh, I'm not saying anything about that. You know what you have to do, I don't know. Technically.
It's like, we'll talk about it later.
Yep. Right, the planning board has no jurisdiction over there. He does.
What's that? So no one else would be able to, so we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to just have a quarter.
You're right. Thank you, yes. He, he's right.
So, so you, we're talking about tomorrow, I'm not gonna do that now. But by tomorrow, we'll keep that up. Oh, yeah. So I was gonna bring up, like, if they already started demolitions, you have to change all the, this is fencing done, changing the layouts.
Yeah, I didn't know that. He said he's at that app already, yeah. Uh, yeah, it has, has nothing to do with our meeting anyways. That's, that's a code violation. Yeah, we can talk about it and stuff like that, but that has happened before. That's the first time that that might. I don't know. I don't care. The thing that they did, they did. Okay, we have a next item coming up, and that is SMC Swansea LP site plan modification. So, and this is just a discussion, this is not a public hearing or anything like that. We're just discussing what you would like to do there. Pardon me? Oh, you might, yeah, you might. I'm trying to find out, I'm trying to find where yours is in here. Okay. All right, you're up. You're up. So, so you plan, or you're looking for a modification to your site plan, and this is that development over on Route twelve, correct?
Okay, so.
Familiar with that?
This is, yeah, Asher.
Yeah, that's the.
Yes, this was the Asher construction site previously approved. So it was previously approved for eighty units. I'm John, sorry to kind of jumping the gun. John Newton from Fields Only Land Consultants, Robert Simons from SMC Swansea Limited Partnership. So he's the applicant and the landowner. They purchased it from Asher. Uh, looking to move forward with developing the site as it was approved. So there were his modifications in the architectural design, size of the building in order to, to fit the units and make them more marketable and also it was pretty tight with what was approved on being able to fit the number of units inside the layout. So this is the existing approved layout here on this side. So it was a four-story, eighty-unit building. Total square footage was eighteen thousand, seven hundred fifty-two square feet. This had a hundred and sixty parking spaces approved, all exterior parking spaces. So this was the approved site plans. As part of that, there was a variance for the building height, the average building height would not exceed fifty feet, two inches. There was also a special exception for allowing the multifamily use and that's how they're able to do the eighty units. So what we're proposing is to have a site plan modification. This is the layout that we would go forward with submitting. Eighty units, four stories. It would need the fifth, the variance that's already approved for the fifty feet, two inches, not to exceed for the average height around the building. With this plan, the biggest change is number of parking spaces. So they're gonna have, the bottom floor is now gonna be a parking garage. So forty-seven spaces in the parking garage, which allowed us to minimize the number of spaces outside. And now because of the change in the regulations, we went from two spaces, parking spaces per unit to one and a half for the first number of bedrooms and zero point five for the bedrooms over one. So a two-bedroom unit would have a single unit. So our total count comes to a hundred and forty-one parking spaces, where there was a hundred and six prior of what was approved. So there's a reduction of nineteen total parking spaces with this new layout. Uh, that allows larger green space around the edges, perimeters, a little more green space around the parking area. And the back of the building, so prior, there was a double row of parking with a drive aisle in between. There's now a single row of parking and a drive aisle in the rear. So that slid the building back away from the road on this main portion of the building. So overall, the exterior spaces that are not, including the interior forty-seven spaces, we've reduced by sixty-six parking spaces total. So the impervious is less, all the utilities that were previously approved, so stormwater management in the back, which is a subsurface system, chambers underneath parking, that would remain landscaping the same, and mostly utilities coming in on this north side. So water sewer, it's a pump chamber system that was approved, that would be exactly the same. Drainage is all the same, stormwater management is the same as, as previously approved. So the biggest change is the shape of the building, it's, it's longer going this way, and then the total square footage is twenty-two thousand, six hundred and fifteen square feet. So a little bit bigger building, but less parking spaces. So impervious on the bill, on the entire lot is, is less for this.
You're still keeping your eighty units in there?
Eighty units.
Eighty units, and how are you doing that? By taking the first floor with parking?
So this will be drive down, so you'll drop grade to the rear, and there'll be, that bottom floor here would be parking garage, four stories.
So again, okay, so regardless of, this is second, see, of that. You're in here to, you know, describe what you're doing here. I just lost my train of thought. Oh, yeah, it's, you will have to come for, for a hearing. It wa, it's enough for a site plan modification. Uh, you will have to schedule with the board for a public hearing for that. And Steve, you had a question on this?
Yes, I'm not certain. On this part, I am certain. I live directly across the street. Will I need to excuse myself, please, here?
No, you don't. No, you don't.
Okay, I just wanted to. But I do.
This is just a discussion here. Oh, different.
Different, yeah, he lives.
Oh, you don't live on Route twelve?
You don't live on Route twelve.
I thought you said.
Oh, yeah, oh, okay.
I thought you said Route ten.
No, no, this is, this is. So. So anyways, seeing what he's proposing, they've moved the building back a little bit. You can see the shape of the change, this way and shorter back that way.
Right.
Uh, fewer parking spaces and parking space underneath there. Do any of the board members see anything that they should bring back that we will require them uh, for this modification to the site? Because we're gonna have a public hearing for it, so definitely sizable enough modification to have a public hearing, but do we see any roadblocks that we want to tell them about and if they come back to us?
Will you be excavating more soil up underneath, no, from the original plan?
And they're keeping with the same amount of units. They're just reconfiguring a little bit there. It's obvious appropriate anyways, put that stuff on, but it looks like they did it okay there.
I'll be put underground parking with the same vertical.
So.
And without excavating underneath.
So currently, the property slopes down to the, right, the rear.
Where are the slopes?
This was more of a fill slope in, in here prior with retain walls. Our retain walls are shorter, they want to be shorter in height along this northern property line and the western property line. So we'll drop grade with, with this driveway here. This will drive down to the back, this will be at a lower grade, allowing to come in to the garage on this south side. This would then come up in grade, so this layout would work better with actual natural topography more so than where this was much more of a fill site. We're actually leveling and having a higher retaining wall in the rear, in the, in the, previously.
Perhaps, perhaps I can help with your question. Again, my name is Bob Simons from SMC. In the original plan, it was a four-story building with a walkout basement. It's essentially a five-story building. So they have four stories of apartment, and then in the basement, they had a half, half of that design, had some apartments in it, and the rest of it had a lot of like storage area and areas like that. In our design, our footprint is a little bit larger, because we've added community space, exercise space, cyber cafe, uh, the leasing office, all on the first floor. And then we have four floors of apartments, and our unit mix is a little bit different than theirs. And then because we have four stories of pure residential, we're able to use that basement as a garage. So that's why we end up with, able to put parking underneath the four stories of wood as opposed to here, where they had essentially a five-story building, half buried. But that helps.
John. Good, so.
So our, our. So, our our hope was that this was going to be considered the minimalist change to the site plan. We did not change the unit count. We did not change. We actually increased some of the landscaping and impervious, the previous area, kept the same general configuration building, but changed it due to the building design itself. But we haven't approached on any of the setbacks, haven't changed the drainage. Essentially, we think that we've improved it a lot by touching some of the parking.
Okay. And there we have it. That's what they're proposing. Anything anyone can think of that may obstruct this? And also, or has to decide whether it is a modification or whether you want to come in for a whole new site plan if it's substantial change enough. As, you know, if it can brought up, it's it's the same pretty much site, other than the building being reconfigured, in my opinion.
So, this is, I'm sorry, we have a smaller version of it. This is the original drawing that was submitted with a site plan by Asher. So, their design from the front, right, appears to be a four-story building with the walkout basement behind. And we have a similar building that we built in Merrimack, New Hampshire. And our designs are a little bit different in that we tend to have a little bit more reveal to the elevations, a little bit different color palette, and try to get some relief in the roof line. So, here in Swansea, we probably would not build these pillboxes on the top, but we would still have these bumps in the building that will come up a little bit higher than the rest of the building. So that when you look at it from afar, you get a little bit more of a reveal to the look, kind of adds a little bit more character to it. And in this building, the road goes behind it, and in the back corner, you drive underneath. And this is the rendering for our private unit group, and this is what the actual building looks like. We think it kind of looks nice. The other thing, one of the other things I should point out is that we tend to build Juliet railings and sliders in the units. We found that a lot of properties that have regular balconies outside tend to collect things like tires, barbecues, and furniture. And our desire is to have the appearance of a depth, so you have big sliders in all the units and a Juliet rail. So, people can open the slider, get the sense of the outside without going out, storing things out there.
All right. Thank you. Yes.
They changed the material. Room sizes.
Um, we'd want to see it, but, you know, you're going to bring in a full set of plans as to what you're going to do, elevations included, correct?
Correct.
I didn't hear something about changing some to studios.
Yep. So, we typically build our our buildings with fifty percent two bedrooms, thirty percent one bedrooms, and twenty percent studios. And this is the first wall layout. So, when you come in, the community space is low here, at least not since here. And and this shows the makeup of the units.
Okay, well, it's up to the board then to decide whether or not it's a substantial change to have to come back for a whole new site plan review or if it's a modification of an existing site. That's that's the question before us. And again, it's that would be binding, what the board voted on, be binding whether they had to come back for a site plan review or a modification to an existing site plan. And again, it's just a discussion tonight for the applicant. So, what does it look like? Now, there there's a fair amount of change there, and there's a fair amount of similarities there.
And we could go really either way.
It could go either way. Then then we look to as to the butters. Are there a lot of butters around there that might be concerned about the big change there?
I didn't receive any.
And there aren't too many butters around there, anyway. No.
Just one, just.
Yep. So, that's another thing the board can take into consideration, whether we're going to ask for a full blown site plan review, which gives people a chance for public hearing to air their grievances about a particular project or not. In this case, there aren't that many butters there, and we haven't heard from any butters. It's, it could go either way. I would lean towards a modification. If they came in for a site plan review, the chances are we'd approve it anyway. So, you know, we've seen this whole thing except for what they're proposing there and a public hearing.
This is before my time, but were there any big issues with this property that were addressed last time that?
Not that I recall. Mainly, there were some issues. It's, it was, yeah, behind the building, and as far as the land dropping on, way behind the building there. And there are substantial retaining walls that have to be built back there and engineered for that. That was some of the concerns of the board.
That's a big change.
And this, and this, yeah, and this minor modification of the site plan allows it to be a little bit less paddled, right?
Yeah, well, we we move those parking spaces underneath the building. It's it's pulled this parking edge from what was approved further in. So, this is the building setback. That's a twenty-foot side setback. So, we're now about twenty feet in, whereas before, it was right along the property line for the the parking and the retaining walls on what was approved.
So, again, if there are no other questions for the applicant here, and we can just decide on whether we're going to do, which direction we're going to take. Any other questions? No, guys? No. So, let's decide. A modification to the site plan, won't call it a minor modification, because it's not a minor modification, but it's a modification just the same and taking into consideration location of it. You know, it's not a lot of residential area or something around there for, you'll complain about, it's right on Route 12. You know, I guess I would say probably a modification with a public hearing would suffice in my, but this is a board decision, not not the chairman's decision. Anybody else comment on it? Yes, no? It'll have to be a public hearing.
Yes, I should think so.
Motion that we, it's a modification for the public hearing.
Okay, a motion by Michael York to have the applicant come in for a modification to the site plan review at our next meeting. Would it make it our next meeting as far as notification processes? Probably not. So, I won't, I won't give the date. So, the motion is is that the, it's a modification of the site plan and that they need to come in for a public hearing. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Richard Lane. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor can indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, we will see you sometime in the future.
Thank you.
Everything on the plan?
Not good it matters, but are you guys still going to purchase the land that's in back?
We will not be purchasing land in the back.
You didn't need any swamp.
What's that?
You didn't need any swamp land.
Okay, next item is the ten-year transportation plan feedback. Anybody have any feedback on that, or are we going to feed it back to our next meeting? You know, anybody, I mean, no, no dissent on that. It's, I think the deadline is just about here. So,
Well, I got all of this ten stuff that they were proposing, like the curbing and all that, and all that stuff there that they did last year.
It's on anything, really, as far as the ten-year transportation plan. If the planning board feels that something in town needs to be addressed by the state with their plan.
Oh, no, I was thinking of the other thing that.
Oh, yeah, that, no, that was something, what the heck were, I forget what it was, the advisory committee, whatever, I think.
Wasn't that something?
That's the. Tenure plan, whether, you know, we had mentioned a crosswalk near with the new thing coming up. That could be on the tenure plan, a crosswalk.
We need crosswalk. And I don't know, Swansea or King, it would be responsible for over market gas. I'm working on that right now. Oh, good, because somebody's going to kill. I don't have a theory, but I'm working. Okay.
The other thing that should be addressed too is the speed limit from Forest Avenue down to the Trail Park.
It is too high.
Way too high.
It's not high enough.
Slow your butt down.
Also, at Ashill and Route 10, that intersection is a killer.
Yes.
Ways. When you come down from King and you want to turn left on the Ashill, which I always do, and I've noticed that if there is a vehicle of any size, say even a mail truck coming up from West Swansea, and and they stop to turn in there, you can't see to turn in that. You can't see if there's anything coming. So, I know enough to sit there and wait until the school bus is going up to the school bus depot that gets out of the way, and I can tell if somebody's going to come through. But otherwise, you really don't know. There needs to be some kind of modification there.
Any any suggestions as to what would make that better? You know, what would you, if you were in charge?
Just, oh, wow. Well, you're coming down and you stop, and people are coming behind you, and they don't have to stop because they're not going to turn. They go by you about sixty-five miles an hour, and your car goes because they're going so fast. It needs to really be slowed down between the gas station and Bay Hill and and Ashill and the horse, what is it, Cheshire Horse and the bus depot and Ashill.
So, we might want to look at that intersection. They they modified that, how many years ago was that? I'm trying to think. Remember, they moved it up.
Yep. They moved it over to square off with.
Do you suggest what, a slip lane there or?
Well, we have it. We have a slip lane to turn left. But you can't see, and and somebody who doesn't live around here, and a lot of them go over Ashill, believe me, from Massachusetts and everywhere, is going to pull out there when they can't see and get.
What would, what would make them see better?
I don't know what would make them see any better, because you can't, you just can't see around things that stop.
The physical.
But maybe a caution light or something would slow people down maybe a little bit. They won't get quite as hard.
We can suggest it, you know.
Can I add something?
Yes.
That same intersection. So, if you are going north on State Route 10, and you want to make a left onto Bay Hill Road, you've got traffic trying to turn left into the gas station, and I'm not turning left into the gas station. And people are coming, and they think, you know, I'm going to go much further straight and then turn left. But you have people coming thinking I'm turning left. It's very dangerous.
That's a toughie there, yeah.
It's too many curb cuts.
The other direction.
Right next to each other. You've also got Maple Nursery curb cut right there too.
Yeah.
There's a bunch of them. That's very dangerous.
That's a tough one. Right. I know. I don't know what they can do about it. Even coming the other way with the blinkers on for for taking a right, someone might think you're going Bay Hill Road, which is coming into the station area.
That's right. There's it, right. Either way.
But I don't know what to do about it.
Well, I think, I think it could be reported to Southwest that that intersection needs to be examined once again.
Well, we talked about the tenure plan. We can just put it on that, I guess. Have the state look at it. Southwest too could look at it.
Yeah.
Put it in there.
Yeah.
It used to be Joyce's Country Store.
So, shall we do that? We'll have that intersection put on that tenure plan or or mention to them anyways.
Yeah, I think you should.
Yeah. Any other places around town come to mind? Seeing as the deadline is tomorrow.
Getting some sort of traffic control, be it blinking lights or whatever, when there are games going, just like you do like for school.
Yeah.
It's on a timer, you know, it goes off, slowing down to twenty through the through that section.
It's suggested.
I like that to not wait ten years.
Yeah.
With the recommendations that Southwest, so we submit to Southwest, and then they kind of pick and choose from everybody's projects, what they're going to bring to the state. And then they get put into the second half of the tenure plan. So, anything we give them, it's going to be a long time coming. So, we should be looking at bigger picture stuff. I did submit addressing West Swansea Road through West Swansea to get crosswalks and other things to slow cars down in that area, because it seemed like a big project. I don't know if the state will back it, because who knows? But there may be other resources we can tap into to calm traffic near near the Ballfields and other grant money available to to make improvements that I don't know if it's actually underneath the review of this board to do, but there are other things that the town is working on.
The problem with Southwood we was talking about, that's a state road too.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the town, the board, this board has in the past just sent. Transportation right up here.
We said absolutely. Yeah, we should push for it. That's true.
That's a good idea. I'm tenure planning, right?
Yeah, it may not. So, if it's really important, don't.
Yeah. Okay. We have enough on the tenure.
Yeah.
All right, so, protect protections, that's just a memo that I had put out, I don't know if anybody read it or not, about the things that we could add to our site plan review regulations to more or less appease the conservation commission, but also address some of the issues that they had about protecting aquifers that were permitted or weren't in or aren't in our zoning regulations. And in doing it that way, I think, and we can read it over and discuss it at our next meeting, but in doing it that way, we aren't really preventing any type of development from going on. But if that development is deemed that it may or could pollute an aquifer underneath, we can bring them to special or special studies and different things that they have to present to us to prove that they're safe. For so, yeah, we'll just read it again. We'll discuss that at our next meeting. I think Concon was here. Was she here for?
She was.
She got tired of waiting for us. So, but again, we can discuss it next, next time. And then last agenda item is against site plan review regulations, but that's a standing one on there to discuss when we have, we have time for our site plan with regs. You know, just different things to think about. So, is there any other, I don't think there's any on there, site plan regs. Make sure it be something else. Any other businesses that may be required now? Other than why the Zoom wasn't working. You asked why the Zoom wasn't working.
We'll work on that. I have no idea.
We don't know.
Keep saying that you're in another meeting. They keep saying you're in another meeting.
It keeps saying that you as the viewer is in another meeting?
You know, when that happens, that happens when you open two sessions.
I wonder.
You never close the previous session.
Michael was in here doing the select meetings meeting.
Okay. And if he doesn't close that session, then it says you're in.
Yeah. I'm very sorry about that.
That would be good. So, just tell him next time.
Now, I'll check next time. I have no idea. Of course.
Yeah, thanks for letting us know. We never would have known.
Yeah, we wouldn't have.
Because after you said something, I tried on my phone during that time. It said Michael Bradley will catch him in at some place.
Well, nothing's coming up on on my screen here showing that anybody's asking to come in. There's nobody in the waiting room. It didn't register. It's, all right. Thank you.
Thank you so much, because then I can watch from home. Bye.
Okay, if there is no other business to discuss, then a motion to adjourn would be in order. Motion to adjourn by Jamie, seconded by Brandon. Jamie, great rivers discussion. Then all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.